County, um Duval County's COVID nineteen community level is uh currently designated as low. Um the CDC, I'm sorry. I'm glad everybody's made it in. Traffic was crazy, rain was crazy. Everybody's kinda, anyway, let me get back to the script and see if I can do this now. Um according to the CDC's website, Duval County's COVID nineteen community level is currently designated as low. The CDC currently recommends indoor mask wearing for people with symptoms, a positive test or exposure to someone with COVID nineteen. Thank you for taking the time to join us and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. Um we have four items today. We have a transportation update, um in particular, a focus on magnet stops, school safety and security update, soft skills updates, and then we have governance, and I will let you know I have a number of things, um those board chair and governance to to share with you and get some feedback on. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Green, um so that she can get us started.
We will start with Mr. Suarez and uh Ms. Harding, who will present the transportation, um recommendation today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today's brief, we're gonna go over a lot of different aspects about transportation, um where we are and some of the things really probably need to consider going into the future. Uh first, to give you a look of where we are, our current transportation cost fuel a mile is sixty-two point six million. The state only provides twenty-one point seven, so we pull in almost forty-one million dollars out of our general operating budget to fund transportation. It's a lot of, a lot of money gets pulled out. When you look at audit findings, different groups, at HBC, look back at twenty nineteen and said that we were three hundred fifteen percent of our FFP funding, most school districts are two hundred fifteen percent. So we are like fifty percent higher. We look at uh another audit comparison by the state and see our transportation cost makes up six point two eight percent of the general fund revenue. Whereas similarly, other schools are three and a quarter, four percent. So we're almost again another fifty percent higher. So the question, you kinda wonder, you know, why, why is that? If you look at the next slide, uh let me get to that, but there's some additional considerations also uh coming up. We're gonna be rebidding contracts. You know, we've had issues with driver shortages and on-time performance. So uh three of the five GSA geographic support area contracts will go out for rebid this year for starting in twenty twenty-four. Uh that's kind of important to, really to to handle the driver shortage situation and to get better performance. But when that happens, you're gonna see a repricing. When we, when we're repricing service contracts, one of the hardest hit areas in the economy is the service worker. You know, food service worker, sodium worker, uh transportation worker. So you're gonna, we're expecting to see cost increases from ten to twenty percent, which will be three to six million dollars when those contracts rebid, uh transitioning to a different contract format to get better, better results. The goal was really to reduce again the negative impact of the driver shortages and also to improve performance. We have another major vendor, Fur Student, that's doesn't currently have any of our contracts right now. STA has four, Durham has one. For a student out there as a competitive bidder, that's gonna help. And when we make sure everybody's aware, they're coming back to the picture. I really wish there was another small firm coming into the picture. But the big companies are, they're circling. We had A and S, which was a real viable contender, but Durham bought them. So you're seeing them trying to, yes. But if we can get Fur Student is real and they're gonna be, they've been competitive before, expect them to come and be competitive now, hopefully not get as high of a price increase. But realistically, inflation, labor shortages, you're gonna see a cost increase. So work in it this summer and fall, and then new forms would start twenty twenty-four. Now, there, just for your awareness, not necessarily a big component of this brief, but there's legislation pending to mandate when schools can start. Middle schools start, no, early at eight AM, high schools no, earlier than eight thirty AM, taking effect July first, twenty twenty-six. If it passed, it would affect this. This is our, our current bell times, you know, elementary is right thirty, middle's nine thirty, high schools seven fifteen. The reason it has such a dramatic impact on us is we've, we work, you know, similar to Atlanta Airport. All of our high schools are like Little Atlantis, right? Everyone gets a ride, everyone lives in a high school boundary. So for no additional cost, we pick up all the choice riders on a high school bus, get them to a high school, very efficient. Then shuttles run out of these high schools from seven fifteen to get to, get back to them, to get to the choice. Most, if you notice, most of the magnet schools start at this elementary bell time, eight fifteen, eight twenty, eight thirty. That's how the system works. You have to gather efficiently and then shuttle. And we do that like seventeen location, all of, a lot of the local high schools have this functionality built into them. If we changed this new bell time, we would have to try to preserve that structure where you have the gathering at an existing wave. So it's not majorly more expensive, and then a shuttle to the next wave. So choice would always have to follow the, the high school. And the reason we go high schools is because there's a few. If you went to middle, you go up to twenty-six campuses, now you go from seventeen to twenty-six. Fifty percent more expensive. If you tried to do it, elementaries would be even more expensive. So current structure is very cost efficient for what we do. So that's important. Now, what we do, here, here are probably the reasons that show our expense. Number one, we have seventeen countywide networks, so the Paxtons, the Stantons, the DAs, uh the JWAs. Now, the middle and high schools tend to be paired, like JWJ and Paxson are paired. You'll see, uh Darnell was a six twelve, obviously, but I think it's paired with Stanton. So you'll, you'll see things paired to drive the cost down, but it's still eight hundred and sixty-one thousand is the average cost. So it's almost a million dollars for every one of these. So right here on that one line is almost seventeen million dollars. Remember how we showed you how we were so much above the other, the most school districts? We should be spending about forty million versus sixty. Cause everyone spends about fifty percent over their FEP. So realistically, people like every other school district, we should spend about forty something. We're at sixty-seven, roughly seventeen million there. We also have thirty-one networks that support thirty-one schools. These are smaller networks, they're not countywide, but they go to more, they may go to five or six school boundaries. The school within the schools, or ones that tend to be smaller. Um we have thirty-one of those networks. Their average cost is fifty-three thousand. The average cost per bus rider, eleven hundred and twenty-five dollars. The average cost per magnet bus rider, twenty-one hundred, almost double. That's average. When you go look at some of the more expensive ones, per magnet bus rider, twenty-five thousand dollars for one student. For Rufus Payne, another small magnet program, fifteen thousand. Now, what drives this cost is not that they're super expensive routes. They're, they're expensive. It's the number of riders. When you run a sixty thousand dollar route for four kids, math is fifteen thousand a child. So that's what drives it, that, you know, that's really what drives out the cost. If you look at ESOL, you run ESOL, you know, English speakers, other languages for, for bilingual. Each one of those networks is eight hundred thousand. If you look for off ed, we run the trunk routes for alternative education schools, which are standing routes that don't change. Because the enrollment is forty-five or ninety days, and so kids come in and out of that system, we set those trunk routes to give the coverage throughout the city. And then students have to get to them and get to the alternative education schools. So that's one point one nine. So if you look at this sheet, you kinda have your answer. When you say, why are we twenty plus million dollars more expensive out of the school districts? We do, this is not required by statute. Neighborhood elementary, neighborhood middle, neighborhood high school, ESE mandated by statute, you gotta do it. This isn't. This is, this is the way Duval has just grown over years and years and, and gotten to this point. Providing this high level, it's a high level of service, but I will also tell you the quality in some of these cases is not great. Right? Because you gotta, some of these students have to get up five thirty AM to get to the high school by seven, and then they catch a shuttle seven fifteen, gets them to the magnet school by eight thirty, five thirty to eight thirty. But the option is nothing, like no coverage. So it, it provides, it fills a need, but it's expensive and, and again, not, not the greatest quality. So we came up with ten recommendations for how we could potentially reduce costs. Show you these. Now, you can't do all ten of these because some of them are redundant. Some of them are like, like super express routes, which I'll show you, condenses magnet stops to less, but still runs magnets. You can't do that and eliminate all magnet transportation. So in this one, some of these other ones are in there, and we'll show you that at the very end, but just keep in mind, you mix and, you can mix and match the recommendations. First one, further straightforward is Grasp. Grasp Academy en- en- enjoys uh transportation down through the manor in southwest, southeast area. We would pair it with another countywide magnet for Caroline Middle. So instead of having two separate buses running, we would pair them up together. Grasp currently enjoys almost a neighborhood level of service, where they go into their door, into their neighborhood. We would shift them over to the magnet model, where you get the express stop. So, and the whole concept behind the express stop was, which is key to transportation, is that it is a partnership. The district will go as far as it can go, and we rely on the parent or guardian to finish that responsibility. That's the concept of the express route. It will take it to a school, to a large public area, which may be a few miles away from your home, and you have to get there to pick up your child. That's been in place for like ten years. They would shift Grasp over to that, potential savings five hundred, six hundred, almost a half million dollars, and implementation by this coming August, twenty twenty-three. And this is a, this has been a real problem for us to cover Grasp. Some of you that have Grasp students that receive complaints, this would help go a long way to helping you fix this by pairing them up and being more efficient. Magnet, the review policy, we currently have in place a policy where if there are five or less, or less than five students, that we send letters throughout the current school year, that that particular bus route would be terminated for the following school year. Right? These are choice magnet routes. Remember the slide I showed you about the average cost, fifteen thousand, twenty-five thousand? The current policy targets that. This would take it up to ten. And if we took it from five to less than ten, there'd be an additional five hundred or six hundred thousand dollars in savings. This would go, this would target the most expensive, in most cases, cost per rider. Cause you're talking about buses with ten or less kids, and a route could cost sixty, seventy thousand dollars. So you're talking at least six or seven thousand dollars per student, if not, you know, nine, ten, twelve. So that's option recommendation number two. At ten or less, again, it would occur over, um when it says August, twenty twenty-three, we would send the letters out during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, notifying people, and the first actual reductions wouldn't occur till August, twenty twenty-four. Okay, just like we're currently doing now, letters are going out this year for five or less, and those reductions will occur this August, twenty twenty-three. About state Florida rule, you know, the state requires up to two miles or less that you, you're not provided transportation and bus stops one point five miles away. And we, we, we went through this, and I went through that. That was not fun. But then we reversed it, and for those of you that here remember, yeah, uh not, not a, not a great time. And obviously, everyone was happy to get back, but now we're revising it because the cost to do this, what's really the donut, that half mile. So when we submit for state funding, when you submit your ridership, if it's one point five to two miles, the state zeros it out. Gives you zero revenue, even though you're incurring that cost. The same thing with bus stops. So by going back to what the state funds, you would cut out those, reduce those ineligible riders and uh potentially avoid, you know, five hundred to a million dollars in cost. You can see some of the benefits, you know, the more equitable, obviously, all the other counties do this, but then, you know, there's gonna be less bus support and the type of issues with absenteeism and, and crossing guards that are needed when you have more people walking. Recommendation four, develop super express routes. This builds on the current express route concept, where we have uh school bus stops at district schools and also large public institutions like, you know, commercial institutions like Public Parking Lot or Walmart Parking Lot. We really look for big, wide open, reasonably well-lit areas if, because of the evenings, that buses can pull in and safely drop off students, and the parents can gather and pick them up. This would collapse the commercial ones into schools. So it would basically be through our county public schools only. So it would be more of the same. You'd take the current express, which there may be five express routes serving an area, two of them may be at one, maybe at Walmart, one may be at Publics. Those would be collapsed into the nearby schools. Savings one to one and a half million by reducing uh the number of stops and the amount of mileage has to be driven. Obviously, less convenient than express routes are now. And that would be, obviously, that would be the impact, um more supervision at, at campus bus stops, cause you'd have more students being dropped off at, at schools after hours, uh if there's public transportation, uh JTA buses not having safety. The, the big difference in doing this, though, is with the JTA bus policy being twenty-four, seven, seven days a week, that really does help. When we did this before, ten plus years ago, we had to bring JTA into community meetings instead of booths. So people could talk to JTA and understand how it works and take advantage of it, what the costs were. In this case, there would, there would be no, there's no expense, and people are already using it. So that's one benefit of doing it. It would affect the dedicated. So you're talking Darnell Cookman, JWJ, Darnell D A, and Randolph. Not schools that are not dedicated, that have magnet programs. Transportation zones, we have, uh what this does is it has a geographical focus. And one of the issues is just the sheer logistics of picking up a student at Fletcher and taking them out to Baldwin. That happens, and that is not a fun ride. Okay, but that's, that's what, that's what happens. This would look at them and say, what's the most logical way to divide the county up? So Stanton, Darnell Cookman would get a zone that would, that would be limited to the first coast range and rebel high school boundaries. So if you lived in those boundary areas, you would get transportation. If you lived outside of them, you'd have to self-transport. And it goes through each one of the dedicated magnets and reduces. Uh where you have IV programs spread out to the city with Stanton or Paxson or Wolfson, it works out. You know, you can still get to that IV program. When you get to DAs with one of ones, then you're really limited in the access getting to that. If you live outside of that, condenses zone. That's a drawback, but you know, now you, when you get into these type of larger scenarios, you see the savings, cost avoidance, two point nine to four point three, almost two, three to four million dollars reduction by doing this. So you provide some level of transportation. The ride quality is obviously gonna be better, cause now you've taken the process, the high school boundaries that are near physical campuses and made those the boundary and the transportation boundaries, which gives you a shorter ride and is gonna reduce the length and, and the time of the rides. You can see some of the challenges with actual activities, again, more, more students on campuses, um JTA issues potentially, but I think you would just get, the biggest issue with this one would be like more of the one-ofs, the DAs, uh where you have the, Phil Peterson, where you have the unique programs and you can't get it out of the school. So you have to self-transport if you want that specific program.
Come in and Paul, I'm sorry, Mr. Suarez, we can't for a second. Um I've had it in my notes, there are ten recommendations, if I recall correctly, and maybe deposit five, or we can keep going. Is there anyone who wants to ask a question now, or do you wanna keep going? I just wanna give a second, yeah.
I don't understand, I, I read through this last night. Can you explain a little more what you're thinking about JTA? And how they fit into this? Cause I'm not sure if you're saying that we're gonna encourage students to ride a JTA bus to school? Or, or are we encouraging them to ride the JTA bus to the hub?
They can, they can work it how they want. We just wanna make sure people are aware. You know, having JTA twenty-four, seven transportation available is gonna work in some cases, not in others. The, the issue with JTA is the coverage level is sixty to seventy percent. They do not cover the entire county. You know, one of the funniest things people say is, well, let's just shift all the students over to JTA buses. Can't they do that? Realizing JTA runs like two hundred buses or some number like that. We, we run like, you know, hundreds, almost, you know, about, near, not quite a thousand, we run a lot of buses, like eight, sixty or nine hundred buses. So we're like four or five times their size. It's physically impossible for them to do that. Most people don't realize it. They're also heavily subsidized. That's how I think people don't realize it. If they took on more, you know, you know, they had, if they took on like twenty more busloads of schoolchildren, they would have to go back to the city and get their budget. The reason they do this, they're doing what they're doing, is they, a lot of buses ride empty. So they figure, get the kids on when they're young, onto the buses, take up that unused capacity and develop future customers. I really think that's their mindset and why they're doing this. But that's available. We would just wanna make sure people are aware that it's available. We're not necessarily encouraging or discouraging, but in some cases, you know, it will help. And I think it's helped already. You know, cause we've had driver shortages now for a couple of years, and you know, people are adapting it, and I think people are using JTA to a certain extent. Yes, ma'am?
I have a follow-up.
Yes, ma'am?
So we would be, we would be, these would be existing routes, including transfers. Whatever the route is to get from my house to whatever school is, that's the route my child would ride. And so if there's a transfer or even two transfers involved, that's what a student would be doing in the morning.
They would take advantage of the existing JTA routes, of that word. JTA is not going, JTA really can't change to, to get buses full of schoolchildren, like some people want them to do, because they don't have crossing arms. They don't have, they don't have all the safety gear and equipment that we have. One thing I neglected to mention. Another reason we're so expensive is because we have one of the newest, safest fleets in the state. If you look at it, STA bus or Durham bus, you notice how it kind of looks kinda nice. Then you look at, you know, other buses going around, not so nice. That's another reason. Because we contract out and we continue to pay for miles, the contract requires them to have no buses older now, it's like ten to twelve years at some point, and an average age lower than that. So um that keeps, that buses refreshed. Most school districts, very few, I think it's only two or so that are outsourced. Most of them have very old fleets, cause they haven't capitalized. Whereas Duval County has modern, safe buses. It's a big, it's a big difference. We've, we've had that distinction for years, but it does come at a cost. It's not, it's not cheap to, to run a bus fleet that probably costs like a hundred million dollars. I mean, every bus contract, ten to twenty million dollars of capital to get a fleet. So there's a lot of money in, in this. There's a lot of capital barriers to uh winning a transportation contract. But we, again, I just wanna, we do benefit from them, from one of the newest, if not safest, bus fleets in the state.
Remember Joyce, I think you have a question.
Um do we know the ridership for our students right now with JTA?
We do get feedback from them. It was like three or four hundred. Do you remember the latest article?
Oh, the latest that we received, one of those eleven hundred kids.
On a, what kind of, kind of basis, don't you?
Um he was giving us those daily counts, and so that was the highest on a single day.
Eleven hundred per day was the highest count.
Okay, and then, um I guess, do we know age, like if it's, I would assume the majority of these students would be high school students, but do we know the breakdown? And then with middle and high school, and then I'm assuming that a elementary school child would not be eligible to ride the JTA bus without a parent or guardian.
So the program that was offered by JTA was targeted towards the middle and high school students. They don't break down when they click how many, you know, of the um badges, the uh school badges that they're accepting. They don't click the age, just that it's a school badge.
So that includes charters?
Yes, charter school students, it's open to all kids, all.
And they're just, they're just counting student ID cards going onto the buses, is what they're counting.
Remember Willie, you have a question?
Yeah, two quick questions. Um to the chair, uh with, with JTA, is it a contract or MOU we have? Cause we could say this today and then the administration comes, like, exactly, we're not doing that anymore. So wondering about that. That's my first question. Then I have another question.
No, there's not. They're, they, they pretty much approached us, asked if we'd be willing to partner with them to help get the word out into the schools. And we did all that, uh and they, they had a second vote and are voting to continue it, but it's really at their discretion.
Got it, okay. And then my second question is, based on, uh we keep seeing the estimated reduction. When we go back to the estimated reduction, that's because of less buses, less miles. Can you explain like what's underneath the estimated reduction in each of these scenarios?
We pay for mileage and fuel. So when you see an estimated reduction, that is, that really would translate to miles. So many dollars per mile, multiply the number, you know, divided by the miles per dollar, and you'll get a mileage. That's really what it comes down to. Some of it's tricky because every, every route has a letter designator, so neighborhood's R and ESOL is B and magnet is M, so, and they code them. So you could have like a BMO, you know, like a by like ESOL magnet OSP route. And when we cut just magnet, they have to kinda try to prorate it somehow. So there's some calculation into it. These are estimates. But by and large, it's mileage. Thank you.
Chair Pearson, I think you have one more question.
Yeah, I do have this question on slide five, or recommendation five. How did y'all decide these zones and which schools would be grouped together and which schools they would pick up from?
One of the first words I said on this was geographic. So it's driven by geography, proximity. Where you have like a gifted talented, so you have a Stan, a Paxson, and a Wolfson to work with. You can, you can logically look which high school boundaries are closest to Wolfson, which side is Stanton gonna take, which side is Paxson gonna stake and group them logically. But when you get to like a DA, which is a one of one, all you really can do is pick the closest boundaries around DA that would give us the mileage reduction we're looking for, is more geographic.
And, and that's where I'm confused, because it seems to me that Wolfson, Landon, well, it doesn't seem to me, I know, cause I go to these schools. Wolfson, Landon, and DA are very close to one another. Lovilla and DA are not very close to one another. Like thematically, they're close to one another, but geographically, they're not close to one another. So would it help to put Wolfson, Landon, and DA together and then put Stanton, Darnell, and Lovilla together?
The other point, ma'am, is these buses are already paired.
Yeah.
That's, that, that, so we, we pair the students together, and that's how we've been delivering service there for years.
Well, if we're gonna blow it up, I mean, why not?
We could, we could.
I'm paying for them if it's more efficient and gives more service.
No.
Certainly look at that. I mean, if everything's on the board, then everything's on the board. Um but geographically, DA is a whole lot closer, is in between Landon and Wolfson. It is not close to Lovilla.
Yep, we could look at that, uh that, the exception to the logic of how these were paired is that we, the like Springfield and Jackson, these are paired schools. And that's why they, that's why they were put together, it seems. But we could, we could split that up. If it, if it, if we could be more efficient geographically by pairing Lovilla and DA with other schools, so we could, we could look at that.
Now, the problem is all three of those will start at the same time.
Well, bell times have to follow the law, the logistics of the transportation.
Yeah.
That's what happens. So would they be reset?
Board member.
Yes, thank you. Uh to the chair, Mr. Suarez, on recommendation three, there's a half million, two, uh million dollar savings on that. Um we're not the only county in the state of Florida that has two interstates and a whole bunch of railroad crossings. I understand that's why that policy was approved years ago. Uh has to be in a discussion with some other counties and the impact that that's having on them. Do you know of any other counties that have reduced it from the two mile radius to one point one?
I mean, first of all, Eric, are there other transportation directors in the state that you've talked with?
To, that have rid, um reduced it down to all twenty-five, no sir. Not off the top of my head.
We do provide, I, we really, just from looking at what happens within the state, we just provide so much higher of a level of transportation uh than other, other, other counties do, which is what's driving our, our, our costs up.
And you talked, talked earlier about uh using smaller vehicles to transport kids, cause they didn't need a CBL license. Is, is that on the table too? You do, you tend to negotiate?
We, we are using Z-trip, that's what we're using currently, but it's, it's never more cost efficient to transport, you know, four kids versus fifty. It, it's just that we literally could not get the drivers. And in order to, for the mandatory required, like ESE and neighborhoods are closed. But even for our choice, we're doing the same thing. We are using them to fill. We target, we look at buses that have low ridership. Uh you know, three, four, five kids. Uh if we have to, we'll do two vans for ten or fifteen and, and then providing coverage that way. They tend to be pretty cost efficient price-wise. I will, I will say that. That's been a bit of a surprise. We're down to just a few dollars a mile rate, or, I mean, they're rate.
So Everdrimin is more expensive.
Not Everdrim, I'm talking about Z-trip.
Z-trip, yeah, Z-trip is, is more, is more cost effective.
Everdrim is not, but Z-trip is, yeah. But uh so we are looking at them, but it's really almost a stopcat measure, really driven by the lack of commercially licensed drivers. As you, as you. Thank you.
Um, board member Carnegie?
Uh, to the chair, I, piggybacking on board member Pearson's recommendation five questions, I'm just wondering where the students in the beaches fall. Cause they're not on this list at all. And I know we've got a lot of DA and Stanton kids out of the beach.
And Wolfson.
And Wolfson.
And Landon.
And Landon, on a land.
Thank you, yeah, on a land.
And we'll.
I can just go down the whole list, but they have a lot of beaches kids. So I'm just wondering.
We, if, if there was the will of the board, we have to add them on, it would just be, that's, cause you don't have necessarily a dedic, this is driven by the location of dedicated secondaries, where they're at, and um, you know, near, how close they are. So.
I know, we're on, literally on an island.
Well, Sandwood would be your closest.
Right, yeah, so I mean, so we would have to get, those children would have to be able to get to Sandwood.
Self-transport, yes ma'am.
Okay. Okay.
That's, that's, this is, this is not a good deal in terms of access. It's driven by cost and cost efficiency. What we can do well, we can, we can support the boundaries closest to the actual campus the best, the lowest cost with the best quality of ridership. That's why we're focusing on this, but there is, there is less access. Go back to the, you remember the slide I showed you at the beginning, how many countywide networks? You're, you're, we're used to that level and it's not affordable. We're like a family that took a cut in income. And we're, now we're trying to cut it, we're trying to tighten our belt. And so, there's not any easy choices here on these rec- these recommendations are not easy, yeah. Don't mean to say they are. There's going to be some, having gone through, when we cut transportation to the seven dedicated magnets years ago.
Yeah, I was a principal at the time. It was brutal.
Yeah, I was.
You were.
I was here and we were, it was not a lot of hot people. But, uh, because we did it, we did it for different reasons back then, this is really going to be driven by cost.
I've got, um, board member Hershey and then I've got board member Joyce still with questions.
So, I have a neighbor whose daughter rode the city bus to Darnell Cookman and she was fine. And that was pre-two thousand and eight. So, to me, JEA transportation or use of that to get to school is not new. I just kind of wanted to put that out there. Um, when board member Johnson, I first got on the board, transportation budget was right around forty-seven million. And now we're up to sixty million. That's a big jump in seven years. Just putting that out there. So, my favorite question that I like, one of my favorite questions that I like to ask is, um, have we thought, I get looking at the transportation through the lens of transportation. I am very curious to know, um, through the chair to Dr. Green, what I would like to bring back on is how many students do we have riding our buses going to a magnet school? And then a breakdown per district. For example, in District Seven, do we have a lot of people leaving District Seven for schools with a variance placement? Just putting that out there. Do we have a lot of people, I mean, at, at all levels, elementary, middle, you know, high school, whatever? Um, and have we thought about, is there a potential cost savings to say, let's look at what our top magnet draws are? And can we do academies in each district so that, for example, if everybody in Mandarin is leaving to go to Atlantic Beach, and I know we don't provide transportation for Atlantic Beach, that's just an example. But be, the beaches, the Jackson Beach Elementary, then should we have a school in Mandarin that has an accelerated program that, that, or magnet, that, that parents could then, instead of going all the way downtown or all the way, you know, they could go there. I, I'm just wondering from a cost standpoint, because that's a big drop. To me, my, does it, forty-seven million to sixty million in a seven year period is a lot of money. And I just wonder if we need to look at this through a different lens as well. Uh, because I, I think that that's an important factor. Traffic is only getting worse. And so, anyway, clarify my question is, is I want to know where students are, what magnet schools students are going to, and then out of which district. Like, are students in District Seven departing District Seven to go to DA? Are they departing District Seven to go to Stanton? I, I mean, I know there's other ones. Um, and then I think we need to take a hard look at what we are offering. What are the popular choices? And I believe as a, a district, we are at a place that we can replicate, um, what we are doing well and put that in, um, each of the seven districts. I think it's, we need to take a hard look. It's taking, I mean, I, I'll get off my seat box in a minute, but we obviously know traffic has increased. And it is doubling our time to get from point A to point B. Um, I, I just think that it's worth, what, what, what it costs to have people be able to go, to stay in their neighborhood or radius. As a mother of four, I had four children in four different schools and I did, uh, my husband would take some to drop off, pick up at Mandarin to go and I've, I've done, I've taken all my kids to school and stuff. So, I get it and I get the benefit. Um, but I just, I'm wondering at this time, and I think we are at a place because I believe our district is way more diverse than it was in each of our schools twenty years ago and probably even seven years ago. And I think we need to take a hard look at, we're at magnet programs in demand and replicating those in a way that get people to go to schools within each of the district sevens as well as going out. I think that that's worth the conversation because of the expense. And that's, I'll try not to say anymore.
Dr. Green, do you want to chime in?
Through to Chair, to board member Hershey. Uh, as it relates to acceleration, we have done that for every single high school. That's why the Stanton and the Paxton, they no longer have waiting lists. They fill their seats. But in the past, it used to be this long waiting list and we're not seeing that anymore. Because, you know, even Rains and Re, they all have accelerate, early college programs. So, every high school does have an accelerate, acceleration program such as Mandarin, I think, has ACE. Atlantic Coast has AP that not as many students are going to Stanton and Paxton and Wolfson. Well, Wolfson also was drawing, um, with the IB. The others, such as performing arts or STEM, no, that is not, we do not have that at every single high school. Um, what I was, the reason I had my hand up is Mr. Sores is using the beginning of the year budget for transportation with the increased cost of fuel over this year. It increased by three. So, it really will be sixty-three million by the end of this year with seven million increase for next school year. And because we have to go out for an RFP, that's an addition, it will be an additional twenty percent increase in cost. So, we could potentially be in the beginning of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year close to eighty million dollars in transportation.
So, that's double.
So, and there's only one place you go to get that money. It's where we spend, uh, the, our biggest, um, expense is people, salaries. So, guess what we've been doing for the decades? Is you keep trying to balance between salaries and transportation. Transportation is, I love transportation, but it sucks the life out of us. Every time I see, do not talk to me about transportation, cause it, it, it weighs on us because we cannot, and that's why I said, we have to come have this common, tough conversation. I'm, I'm sorry. We, we will not survive if we continue at this rate. We're double what all other districts. I think you saw it in your financial advisory. We're six percent and all other districts, for the most part, are like three percent. So, if it means we need to blow it up and blow up program, then that's what we need to do. I just wanted to show you the future, much like I showed you the future of health insurance. What time mean to show you that future again? It, it, the, this inflation has now hit us. Um, it's not just transportation. Utility cost has gone up thirty percent from the begin, beginning of what we budget to where we are now. And these are not the vast, the only place to go find cuts is in where you spend all your money, which is personnel. And I know our next workshop is on budget, so I won't get too deep into that. But these, these are not things we wanted to recommend, but this, this transportation is just, uh, and, and to make it worse, the driver shortage is not gonna get, it's not getting better. Oh, only a few people experience what we experience. So, if you probably have Durham, you might not hear nearly, but if you have STA, I live with STA. I live with all an STA.
Can I just follow up, Willie, just to my, to my question? I appreciate that with high schools, but it sounds like we certainly need to do that with elementary and middle schools. And my ask again is, where are districts departing from, from each district? Where are they departing from, and where are they going? I think we need to have a look at that. And if nobody's leaving any district to go to a high school, cause they're satisfied with their high school, except if it's a specialized magnet, that's one thing. But then, maybe we have to take a hard look at what we're doing in our elementary and middle schools and see if we can't replicate programs in demand throughout the district to help with transportation. I'm gonna, board member Joyce has been very patient. We're gonna go to board member Joyce. And then we'll head on to the next five recommendations, cause we want to hear more from you. We're really enjoying this.
When, when I saw the PowerPoint, I was super excited about this conversation cause I think it's something that we've needed to have for a long time. I've always said we probably spending more money and at least understanding where the, where we're spending and what we can do to correct, correct this. Because actually, the dollars, in my opinion, should be going to teaching children how to read, write, and do math and not necessarily getting them to school and stuff. Um, so, what I was thinking through this, when I was looking through this, is exactly what board member Hershey just said. That, you know, we can address this, but I think the bigger picture is addressing programs or putting pla- putting the desire or the, the, uh, you know, if it's a college preparatory school, putting that closer to the people that want the program. Instead of, you know, if you have to get on a bus and drive to Jameson Johnson, or if you gotta get on a bus and drive to Leavenham. And, you know, I can just speak for my district, a couple of things that I have, you know, think that could be huge is we have like Shore Middle School that is right there. We have all these A high schools that these children are leaving my district, either to go to a private or a charter or if they can't get into Landon or, uh, Jameson Johnson. And we can recapture these students right here in my district. If we could make Gen, like, uh, Lake Shore a dedicated college preparatory school. It's, it's so simple to me. Um, and I would like, I just think this is the beginning of a great conversation. I hope that the board would like to entertain that. Also, Westside High School. You know, when we look at bus ridership, these children are getting on buses in Argyle and like at Oakley Plantation to drive, to come over to Westside High School. When if we could just think about maybe if it's a rebuild, moving Westside High School and making it more centrally loca- localized to the students in that district that are you, using that school. So, that's just examples in my district. I'm sure you all have the same examples in your district. So, I thank you for that. I think that's the beginning of a conversation that we desperately need to have, and I'm looking forward to seeing those numbers. But my question was this, when we talk about large districts, you know, I know, for example, what is Orange County? They have a lot of highways. They have a lot of interstate. What is Orange County spending? And what are they doing to sort of get over this hurdle? And also Miami Dade, um, I have family members who lived in Miami Dade and they did take public transportation to school uh, in Miami Dade. And I know we tried to make those accommodations in the past, and just like you were a principal, when we took away that magnet program, I would, my kids.
She was one of my parents at the time.
And I was a substitute teacher like full time at Lavilla and that was the inequity. You know, some of the kids that couldn't get the same kind of educa- I mean, so there's concerns around all of this. But I think at the, the end of the day, we'd like to look at, you know, some of the larger districts and what do they do to circumvent some of these issues? Maybe that's a simple question. And then also just looking about, looking at, how do we change programming and getting what our constituents want closer to them? So, they don't have to go so far to get that kind of education. That's it.
Thank you. Um, I will say we're fifty minutes in and so maybe you'll do the next five and then we'll do the next round. Um, thank you for the robust dialogue.
I can offer just one quick explanation on the cost. Bernie Bus awarded the contract back in like twenty sixteen, twenty fifteen, and there was a protest as to how low their price was. And we actually held a hearing, cause the incumbent, they was protesting they were too low. It was upheld, they were made the award, and within two years defaulted. Pricing then was like four fifty, four sixty. On the rebid, it went to six. That single event, more than any other, is what caused almost the pricing case you mentioned, you shared with board member Hershey. That default literally raised pricing a dollar, two dollars a mile, because they were artificially low and couldn't sustain it. They were challenged, defended it, and failed. And then, and then defaulted. And, and we had to do an emergency, almost award to, to the STA. And it came in at six. So, that, more than anything, is what drove pricing up in the last five or six years, that one event. That's important to remember. It was, were we still with Bernie Bus, we would probably be twenty, thirty percent lower, potentially. Although I will tell you COVID and labor shortages and inflation, I think we'd be here anyway. But they just accelerated it faster. Okay, recommendation six, um, school within a school. So, we have certain schools, Rains, Revol, Riverside, Ed White that have magnets within their schools. So, they get, receive countywide transportation for the students in those magnet programs within those schools. It's very, but these are expensive. You can see where the, these can, these can go to, you know, ten, twenty, thirty thousand a student, can be very expensive. If you eliminated, uh, the magnet program itself, you're looking at the savings team, one, one and a half million. Uh, for those, for those schools within a school for, for high school, and then same thing with middle school. Islands, Ford, Auckland, Middle, Dupont, Revol Middle, Southside, Mayport also.
Through to the chair, to the board. What Mr. Sores said, he didn't mean eliminate the program.
No.
Eliminate the magnet status to the program. You said it. I just want to make sure that was clear. Was it?
Eliminate the program, eliminate the magnet status to the program.
Only talking about buses and magnet routes, and or routes, period. So, I appreciate.
Watch recordings. I, I just want to make sure that that's.
Recommendation eight, uh, we have, um, elementary school magnets. These schools, Arl Brown, Arby Daniels, Johnny Ford, and Andrew Robinson. So, we would, uh, cut back on those or eliminate them. Again, it's a small savings, hundred fifty, two hundred K. I, we, I think we put this more on here because these are challenging to run. You know, we're actually moving kindergarteners between shuttle buses and first graders. And if you ever have an area where we, we have to put staff out there, really a big concern. This is it. But it does provide access and opportunity, which is why we started it in the first place. Uh, it's a small reduction. Uh, recommendation nine, this is really a holdover back when Ed White shipped to a military program. And actually now, I think it's a logistics program. Uh, and, and people can opt out of that school's program. And if they opt out, we had to give them a transportation option. So, we gave them a transportation option to, to, uh, to another school, to Westside. Um, and that costs a hundred, a hundred fifty K a year. So, this would literally recommendation here is to take away that option. If they opt out, they have to self-transport to another school versus district providing the transportation. And then, the big one, eliminating all magnet transportation for dedicated. So, you would look at, um, Darnell, David, Jay, all the way down to Peterson and Randolph. Just, just dropping him back to regular neighborhood transportation, rural priority one zones. Twelve, sixteen million dollars, it would take, you know, through August twenty twenty-four to, uh, change to express routes first. And then August twenty twenty-five, do the full elimination. So, we'd step it. We'd first go to a super express route, which would be a lot less bus stops available to get that savings by August twenty twenty-four. And then eliminate all by August twenty twenty-five. This would effectively bring us back to just neighborhood school transportation for, for all the schools. So, this is a big, a big one. Uh, next table just kind of shows you now, because you can't do them all, you have to match them up. Like you can't eliminate all magnet transportation and have ex- have super express routes. It's one or the other, cause, cause super express routes are, would be a step towards eliminating all. So, we grouped them into options, like if we chose the, the GRAS option, increasing the maximum, minimum to ten students. Below that, it would be cut and doing one point five to two miles and removing the Westside option. The total cost reduction would be one point nine eight million. So, you, you, you gotta look at each check mark and see how, uh, we mix and match them. And if they go an increasing cost reduction till you get to the bottom, which is, um, all magnet plus. So, this would be eliminate all magnet transportation. So, you'd see the options of eliminating the magnet. Plus, we would do the others like Westside and, um, one point five to two miles and the GRAS. And that would generate a maximum of eighteen point one million. And that would generate a maximum of eighteen point one million in cost reduction. So that kind of shows you the combination of all. You really don't get into serious money till you start talking about reducing the choice magnet transportation. As you can kind of see the way you mix and match them. So that table gives you some, and we have the cost breakdowns for each one of these. They're on, they're on individual slides. To get to these numbers, when you saw a range, like, one and a half to one point five million, we would use one point two five. We would use the middle of the range to value the option, because you can't add up ranges. So we pick the middle of the range and then toe it off towards the end. That's it.
My question is. Board Member Joyce has been bashing them since about three slides ago, so I'll start with her. Thank you.
Uh, to the chair, Mrs. Sora. On recommendation number six, when you're talking about in, uh, school within a school magnet, when I look at Ed White and Riverside, I think of two different. Ed White, you know, you have to, to me, that's a dedicated, I know it's a neighborhood school, but you have to opt into that uniform policy, that military theme. You have to opt into that. That's different to me than Riverside, where Riverside is just, you know, there's an early college program and there's an engineering program within the school itself. So to me, that's two different things. And I was just kind of wondering how you, why you grouped those together. And then also, if that was the case, who involved them should be on there because Baldwin would be a magnet within a school. So just trying to understand.
Well, we looked at, we looked at schools that were, that were not dedicated magnets. Number one, actually, these schools are not dedicated magnets, but that had actual magnet programs within them. That's really the, the, the discerning factor. We didn't include Baldwin, and I can't tell you, it's just so too small of a programmer, if you recall.
Because in this case, Riverside, Rains, Reval, and White all get district-wide, whereas Baldwin gets a shuttle from Riverside to Baldwin. That's why they're not on here. And, and the reason why those four schools are on here, in terms of their transportation model, it's all the same. It doesn't, you know, in terms of looking at those schools and the cost, I focused on the transportation model, not necessarily, not necessarily the programs that are supported by that model.
So that, thank you for that clarification, that's helpful. Do we know, when we look at these four, these four programs, and these are district-wide transportation models, how many students per each program are utilizing the district-wide transportation? Does that make sense? Not necessarily that they're getting on a neighborhood bus to go to the school, but they're utilizing, you know, how many kids do we have coming from Mandarin to go to Ed White? How many children do we have from the beach going to Riverside? Like, I would like to see that right now because I don't, personally, with no data to support my hypothesis here, I don't think there's a lot of kids coming from those areas to attend these particular schools. So I'd like to just see the numbers for, for that.
For the purposes of coming up with the estimates, as Paul explained earlier, it's mileage. So we were looking at the number of miles on each route supporting that program, you know, supporting the magnet transportation with those schools. So we would have to do a count, a ridership count and provide that to you.
And I think it's important because, you know, if we have one kid coming from the beach to Riverside, how much money are we paying every year for this white kid to take a bus? I mean, I think these are important numbers to know.
And that would fall under that five or less that's already currently in policy. So we would do it, you know, the count and then inform the families that for the next school year, those services will be discontinued, which are absolutely right, that one.
Or ten, or, or is it a hundred or two hundred? Because if it's two hundred, that's a whole different conversation than if it's twelve.
We, to the chair of the board.
Yes, ma'am.
Joyce, we'd looked at this several years ago when we cut to dedicated. Because it was supposed to be a phase one, phase two. First, we cut to seven dedicated and then we're supposed to do phase two and cut all these schools within the schools. And these were expensive. You would have like, you know, thirteen students attending a program at Reval High and it would be like thirty-seven thousand dollars a student. It was, it was, they were expensive back then. I don't know what they are. We haven't looked at them closely this year. But in prior years, we had that table. We did this before. And, but at that time, we brought all magnet transportation back and didn't go forward. But it is, these tend to be expensive. What you can see is one and a half, you know, one to one and a half million in the mileage reduction potential. Now, we'll capture some of this in the, up to ten because those, those expensive shuttles to these schools tend to be on buses that have low ridership. So you would catch some of it under the ten or less recommendation. But if there's more than ten, then you would have to do this recommendation to capture the rest of it.
That was my question about that one, so. First of all, only because it's probably the only report I honestly understand, but I find this report extremely useful and I have a hard copy of it because I printed it, that Dr. Greenspun did at the beginning of the school year. I'm looking at Douglas Anderson right now. I can tell you from Douglas Anderson where students are enrolled, who go, well, students who are enrolled at Douglas Anderson are coming from the following schools. So I just, during the meeting, showed Board Member Carney, there are forty-four students who Fletcher's their homeschool, go to DA. Twenty-six students Fletcher's their homeschool, they go to Wolfson. So seventy from Fletcher going to those two schools. And then from at Landon, there are thirty-nine. Fletcher Middle is their zone school, they're going to Landon. Forty-four from Ocean Way. I don't know if that really affects you enough. Anyway, that would be eighty-three students. So we all have access to this report for our own districts. I absolutely would like to see it for all districts. But anyway, I use this report a lot. So that's, that's that. It's called the Going to, Coming From, Coming From, Going to report. Yeah, I, I find it really helpful.
We will resend it.
It's a part of the Q and A. It's the last page of the Q and A.
That's number one, that wasn't my question. Because somebody, twenty students might go to Landon, but another forty might go to, or a hundred might go to James W. Johnson. I'm looking for magnet theme.
I understand that and I acknowledge that. But this would be a quick look if anybody's looking for a school in their district and where students are coming from. This isn't, we have access to that right now. I would very much like to also see what you've asked for. In addition, I would like to know how many students in DCPS are in a choice program that's not their neighborhood school? And I guess we could just add that up as we go per district. I'd just like to know how many students are in a choice program that's not their neighborhood school? And then per board district. And I think that can just be the grand total from what Board Member Hershey's asking for. As far as choosing programs outside of the district and continuity, I mean, choosing programs outside of the district and making those programs localized instead of, I can tell you that Greenfield Elementary has a hundred and forty-one students going to Jackson Beach Elementary. So that's a lot of students from the Greenfield area choosing to go to JB for a dedicated gifted magnet school. So absolutely that is happening where some schools are losing a, a lot of students to another program. It's not just, I think, as I talk with parents and principals and people in the community, it's not just the program though, it's the continuity that that program affords you, like, for an elementary program. It's the continuity that's afforded so that if we're looking at, if we're looking at putting a, like, a, like a, for Greenfield, if we were to put a dedicated gifted school, the school magnet within Greenfield, that might not be the total solution because then they're, they would be losing out on that next step for middle school. And that really might be the motivation for getting them in the middle school, or the elementary because of what they want their middle school options to be. So I think we need to look at our customers' confidence in some of our schools as to why they're, the, the reason aside from program of why they're not choosing their neighborhood schools. I think some of it has to do with confidence. And that would be school culture, safety, behavior, learning environment. As I have talked, when I was involved with, with launching Wolfson as a dedicated magnet, parents would come and say, I know that my student doesn't quite fit this academic program, but I know that this is a safe school, it's a small school, and I'd rather have my kid get Cs and be in this school than be somewhere else. And so whether that perception was fair or not, I don't know. But I'm telling you what parents would say when I stood at the school choice booth or gave tours of the school, is that it's more than just the academic program. It's the school culture and the perception of safety. You get what I'm saying on that? Okay. As far as what other districts are doing for busing, and this is where I just, I don't know the history as well as maybe I should, but how much does the court order for desegregation affect our transportation plan? And do other districts that we, that are like size of the Big Seven, do they have a similar court order that they're working under or are we unique? And that would be something I would like to know about. And then my last question is, has anyone looked at how eliminating magnet transportation might affect our enrollment at our magnet schools or within DCPS in general? Because I don't know that it's an accurate assumption to say that if we eliminate transportation to magnet schools, people will go to their neighborhood school. Not that there's anything wrong with their neighborhood school, but we have all this choice and people are making choices. And I don't know if people will just, if people will stay with us within DCPS or if they will take another choice that they have, perhaps a scholarship that they will have starting next year. And could we actually lose more in FTE than we would save in transportation by doing this? And so that's one of the concerns that I have is will it be a net or a big enough net gain for the district to make this choice, given the choice environment that we're in? I'm gonna, I think that's, they're gonna bring back one of them. Board Member Carney.
My number one, just comments piggybacking off of what Board Member Hershey introduced and what Board Member Peterson was just talking about. I, I think that there's, it was a few things. One, I'm wondering if we can do some type of feasibility study within the district to find out what parents are looking for within their neighborhood schools. That's number one. Because maybe there's a way to increase, to do almost like a micro school within the schools. If there's some, if, if we've got a fifty-fifty split, say with Greenland Pines or one of these other schools where we want more arts focus and we also want a gifted magnet, is there a way for us to do an internal type micro school situation? That's my first question. So obviously, we need a lot of data to be able to make these decisions. So I'm wondering if there's a way for us to do some kind of district-wide survey on what our parents are looking for. That being said, I think that by taking this data and being able to see really what are each district's, school board districts' communities want, one, we're going to be able to fill a lot of seats in our neighborhood schools. I know some of us during the school choice expo who visited some schools where nobody showed up. And that's a problem. And I think we need to be bringing back the love of having a neighborhood school. And that's because we have so much choice, I think that that's a situation that we could address by doing this. Also, I think it also gives us the ability to increase our overall enrollment. I think we will be drawing kids that are coming from private schools, moving into town and in charters that maybe didn't work out for some families, to come back to our traditional public schools. In addition to that, with HB one passing, parents are going to be able to afford to pay for transportation if they're not paying for their education. So I think we also need to take that into consideration, that parents might be willing to look at car, you know, carpool sharing with other families and paying with, using those funds to pay to get to the school of their choice. So those are just some things that are in my head right now that I think are worth talking about.
And I'm gonna piggyback on you on the pay for transportation. So one of my questions, having been a part of, when I was principal at Landon, we did lose buses and remember it vividly. Enrollment stayed stationary. But what I found was two things. We did have an option to pay for buses. And I had three or four that, three or four buses that showed up and they, I don't know if you remember that piece, but we allowed somehow, and I don't remember how, the payment of buses. So can we explore the possibility if we've got that kind of interest in a school? Back to your point, if there are funds out there that parents can access, allowing that to happen. Now, one, huge numbers of, of kids that did it, but there were some that did. So whether, and whether it's still possible or not now with labor shortages and whatnot, I don't know. But just can we take a look at that? Secondly, I just want to make sure that if we're looking at magnet transportations, my findings were that it disproportionately affected the low-income student. Those from low income were gone off my rosters and they, my seats still got filled, but they got filled with children who were not from the low-income scenario because their parents had the resources to figure out how to get them there. And we did have little carpool sign-ups and all kind. We got, as a school, we got creative because we wanted to keep our seats filled. So we got creative and we did what we had to do to pay the bills and get children in seats. But it disproportionately affected my low-income students. I lost a ton of children that year that were from low income. So as we look at this, I would say let's keep that in mind. And then back to GRASP as well, that was item number one. Honestly, I'm in District One, so transportation for any child in District One that attends GRASP is not that far for me. I'm more concerned with, I have some students that live in Mandarin that attend GRASP. Those are the children that actually live in Board Member Hershey's district, they don't live in mine. So my question is just an equity question on, and I certainly understand because it's almost literally doorstep to front door school route. I, I get what's going on there and it's, it's hard. But all of the children who attend GRASP have either a 504 or an IEP. So my question is, that's part of the qualifier to have it, is the designated school that it is with the state. So my question is, just from an equity standpoint, are children in other schools who have the same IEP 504 scenario getting a certain type of transportation and now we're cutting it from GRASP? And I don't know the answer to that. I just want to make sure that we're being careful that we don't provide those services in another school for children with like program needs, that's all. And again, my children in Arlington only live a few minutes from the school anyway, so it's not a huge effect. I'm more worried about, I do have some families that I have talked to personally that live in Mandarin. And so. Yeah, I've got history too. Yeah, I've just spoken to some from her. They're, they're from all of you. I've got children from everywhere, guys. They're coming to me from everywhere. Every one of your districts have children on that GRASP thing. Ironically, the school sits in mine, it impacts me the least because all of my children live near GRASP. That impacts you all greater than me, your district's greater than me. Board Member.
Thank you, thank you for, for that. You brought back a memory a couple of superintendents ago. When I had a community meeting, someone from a Bertram Springs area said, when are you gonna have a program similar to GRASP in, in our district? So, and I believe the statistic is one in five students have dyslexia, which again goes back to providing some sort of service throughout the district for students. And a couple of things. One is, I'm a parent of four children. I said they had, were four in four different schools during the time the decision was made to cut magnet transportation. Having lived that experience, I would not wish that on anyone because I literally, just to get to one school was a thirty-mile drive from my house. And so it was exhausting to get up and do that, that route. So I think totally cutting magnet transportation, the board needs to think long and hard about for those specialized programs that people go to. I was a parent who did participate in, you know, Kmart parking lot was the big drop-off and things like that. And my daughter did go from Lavilla to DA and they ended up. So they, there was some shared things. And I, just saying, having lived that, I think there are enough of us who remember it that there might be some pushback. But Board Member Jones and I may or may not be on the board when that decision was made. So, but I'm, I want to share that now. Um, but remember Jones and I may or may not be on the board when that decision was made, so, but I'm, I wanna share that now. Um, and, and I do want to add to, um, board member Pearson's question is, my historical understanding is one of the reasons Duval County ended up with the creation of magnet schools was basically to settle a court order. And so my specific question is, um, has the district looked at, have we satisfied that court order? Um, and if so, how do we continue to honor it being equitable for all students? But, um, being able to perhaps again, look at academies within each of the seven districts that provide equitable access for, um, for all students. And so those are my comments.
Board member Jones.
Thank you. Yeah, we've been around too long. Thank God for terminus. The, um, I guess the, I, I noticed four of the five recommendations uh, would impact the diversity of the school, six, seven, eight and ten. And I guess the question that I would, legal question I would ask is, what requirements do we still exist under that desegregation? The magnet program was created to increase diversity in our school. Uh, and I wondered about that because of the growth of charter schools. They were not a part of the certain scenario at the time that order was issued, they didn't exist. So how do, how do we now, uh, address diversity issues in our district? But we don't include the charter schools. And does that work against us? And, and I'm just curious about that. I, I'm very, I, I remember that discussion. It was very, it was a very difficult time for this city. When they went through, uh, in nineteen seventy, students were assigned to a school. And then that summer they found out they had to go to different school because the judge issued that you do it right now. So I just, those are some of the questions that, legal question I would like to hear.
And, and through the chair, I will look into that and happily report back.
Can I piggyback on since what board member Jones said in that question? Is to just clarify, does that court order, because charter schools are public schools, does that court order apply to charter schools? I, I just.
And then, then one other thing, the chair, the, Mr. Sores. We extended, uh, a contract, a ten year contract. And I guess that's the one, we had to do it in emergency because we had to have the buses by the summer of twenty seventeen.
Yeah, to, to the chair of the board, Jones, Bernie Buss, Student Transportation of America, yeah.
So, and, and they had to get, they ordered new buses. It was a ten year contract. Did that, did that negatively, negatively impact the cost, transportation cost because they went under that?
Yes, that, that's, that was really my, my point is that that default, because they were in like the four fifty mid-range and other contracts were approaching six dollars, they were holding back the average cost. When they went under, couldn't sustain that cost, the rebid was, I think it was close to six or higher. At the time, inflation was one or two, this is the ironic part, inflation was like zero or one percent. So they mandated a super high three percent inflation rate every year guaranteed, which is now really low. That's, that's what they get on that contract. That, that did drive the cost up.
And that's one of the GSAs that we're not rebidding us.
That's GSA five, I believe, and we, we are up with one, one, two together and five, we already won five, aren't we? Do we, yeah, 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 we would do five early.
I thought it was a ten year contract because they had to, uh, advertise the cost of those buses.
They, they do, uh, the contract has provisions that allow for termination. Okay. So, but I'm not, you know, proceeding yet, that's just discussion of what we're thinking about. This is, make sure I don't want to preempt any kind of analysis on a future solicitation.
Moving to board member Willie, let's take that and, yeah, one more.
Okay, thanks. Real quick, uh, through the chair, can we, uh, can you introduce yourself?
Someone's talking.
Erica Harding. Erica Harding, I'm the director of transportation and I work for all sorts of stuff.
And she's a genius, so to say, done a great job.
She sent, she sent a lot of our emails, um, to parents. You do a great job with this, thank you.
It's a complex system, so a couple of questions. When, these recommendations, the, these do not take into consideration the change in start time?
No.
No, so if the change of start time happens, we shot that whole nother workshop.
We would have to see, it would depend on what option was chosen on the start time instead of extending the impact. If we chose an option that preserved gathering at the high school level and then next way be a choice, then a lot of this would largely be attacked.
I ask that question because that's in the, in the realm of blowing it up, like thinking about, I don't know if the start time thing is, even if it doesn't pass this year, is it gonna go away? Like, is it gonna come back next year and we have to consider it anyway? So figuring out how we potentially do that, I think is gonna be important. Also, I think, um, I think some great questions were raised, I appreciate this dialogue, especially around sort of our districts and making sure we had certain sort of, uh, options in each district. But what I also think about with that is now our, our city council districts are, I know mine are, they're changed, they're wonky, they're a little bit funky. They're not really, like that, the average citizen is not gonna say, oh, that must be this person's district because it's all windy. So I think we also have to figure out, how, how do we sort of look at the city in quadrants or regions? Not just necessarily school board regions, but really about how we do that. And I wonder how we take that in consideration. And the last thing is around, and this may be hard to, to determine, is how do we connect this back to academic outcomes? Like, how do we say, all right, if you get transportation, you have to ride on the bus for two hours, are you gonna be a better student at the end of that on average than if you don't? Because at the end of the day, that's why we get them to school, to make sure they can learn and be great. And if, honestly, if transportation is helping that, we have to figure out how we pay for it. And if it's not, we have to figure out how to change it. And my last thought is, even though we'll save eighteen million dollars, Dr. Green just said it's gonna be another potentially twenty million dollars this year. So is this just gonna be a thing that we're just gonna see, even if we reduce it now? Is it still going to, is this gonna reduce it and keep it flat as a plateau? Is this gonna reduce it, we're still gonna have to, to maintain inflation and it's gonna be an extra ten, seven, ten million dollars every year? If that question makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, and board member Willie, it's gonna depend on how much we choose. Uh, we were saying that the rebids, uh, you know, could be three to six million more. There's, there's gonna be costs coming up because there's CPIs every year. Uh, so some of it is cost avoidance, meaning if we didn't do this, you would get the CPI impact plus still have this extra cost. If we take a five or ten million dollar reduction and then you go forward with a CPI of a few million, the net may be seven. So a portion of this will always be cost avoidance, but without it, it's even worse because. Thank you.
Board member Jones.
Um, I have a couple of questions, I, I just asked one last on the head and lungs.
All right.
Um, when we look at this slide for recommendation eight, we're talking about eliminating district wide elementary magnet schools. I noticed that you listed Aron Brown, uh, RB Daniels, Ford Robinson, Pine Forest wasn't on there. And I'm, I'm not really sure about why. I know my children, very, a very long time ago, uh, I believe at the time it was a dedicated magnet school. I drove my children to Pine Forest every day over the full moon road. Got in a wreck on Emerson one time, was not happy about that. Um, anyway, do we have, is that considered a magnet? Do we have bus transportation?
It's not district wide. It's not, these, these, these are district wide elementary magnet schools, that's the station.
So I was, I was also thinking about J. Allen as well, because I know both of those are. And I guess we are not just providing, we just, for whatever reason, we choose not to provide district wide transportation to these two schools? And they're, even though they're dedicated magnet schools?
Right, it would be a change in the level of service that district wides would get.
So not all dedicated element, elementary magnet school period get district wide service, I think that's the point is.
Right, yeah. Peak elementary is not, because I've had a parent tell me about that. Right, it's like a, it's like a difference, like a neighborhood school that's a magnet that other people can come to, but still.
So we are already doing this, okay. All right, um, and then on just on slide nine, uh, I just really want to talk a little bit more about Westside because I mean, this is a slide within itself, Westside High from Ed White area. Um, the, Ed White being the special theme that it is, you do have families that will walk in and say, I'm not doing the uniform, not doing it. And so we right now give them the option to go to Ed White. It looks like we're ha, we have three routes with fifty kids. So that's not very many children per bus, it's three. Um, so filling a bus up, um, and we have three of them. So I mean, this whole slide right here, there's some, and it's not a lot, but there's some additional cost savings here, um, for sure. But I do think this definitely needs to have a, we need to have more conversation around how we can maximize, you know, this piece right here. Um, and then we talked about bus contracts and rebidding and going into that rebid process. And I'm wondering, you know, at some point at the beginning of the year, I believe, Dr. Green had mentioned many, you know, vans, you know, using different methods of modes of transportation to get students in certain areas. And so I'm wondering, when we talk about the rebidding, are we asking these companies to also provide service, not just bus service, but maybe van service? Um, or these smaller populations? And that would help us not to eliminate altogether magnet transportation? Um, if we, if we, are we thinking about using that as part of the, um, the rebid, in the rebidding process? Um, and I say that also because, uh, I know, I think Randall was company, I just, I know the Randalls. Um, they actually are my neighbors. So they, they just have all different kind of transportation, you know, they just have, they don't want to just have bus transportation, they have different levels. And I'm sure, um, maybe there's other companies that would also have different levels that could play a part into the rebidding to save the districts some money. I don't know if you have any comment, but.
Through the chair, the board member Joyce. Many of the big ones are subcontracting to Randall. So that's how they're making sure their routes get done, is using Randall to cover their areas. So really Randall wouldn't have, eh, their work is being picked up by either Durham or STA, I can't remember. STA, uh, because STA is having a driver shortage. We are using, um, the Ztrip and the other company, we are using those services, van services, our car service. I, I don't see that going away because I'm not seeing our driver shortage improving anytime. But Mr. Sores is gonna ask that.
We, we have brought agenda items back and amended our current contracts to, to include vehicles other than school buses. VOT, it's weird acronym. The state puts out technical assistance notes, it mandates the specific vehicles you can use. So we modified the contracts, allow non-school bus per state standards in our current contracts. The new solicitations will have that same language, so we will allow it.
Okay, um, when we talk about these smaller methods of transportation, whether it be in service or whatever, is there, has it been discussed within the district, instead of contracting that out, that the district would oversee that, that, you know, like that would be, that would fall under the umbrella of the district? And if it did, I'm not a transportation expert, but could it save the district money instead of contracting it out? Like, we have our fleet within Duval County of.
In-house.
In-house, not necessarily the big contracting buses, but maybe the smaller, uh, van service and having it in-house. And it would give us more flexibility because, you know, we're not, we're not contracting with another organization. We are managing that within ourselves, would give us more flexibility and meeting needs of the district, maybe. Like you said, I don't know anything about.
I'm looking at Dr.
Through the chair, we've had the conversations and we keep coming back to where we currently are. But I'll let, there's many other things, one, we don't own any buses. So you didn't need to have your funding, uh, with, to go to purchase, whether it's buses, vans, whatever it is. Um, then there is union, I believe they would fall under ASME.
Teamsters.
Teamsters, well, yeah, ASME Teamsters. Currently, we don't deal with those issues when we're dealing with transportation. Even though transportation, I feel like bizarre sometimes, at least I can call up and say, mm-mm, I don't know what you're gonna do, but that person can't drive that bus anymore. You, you bring in a whole nother set of issues that you have to deal with. And you're then having to negotiate salaries and we don't have to do that now. Um, we're negotiating contracts. But I'll let Mr. Sores say, maybe he has a different opinion.
Dr. Green has, has, uh, to ensure the board member Joyce, no, those are, those are key points. And the cost of, of an in-house force is, is, we're gonna be a small player compared to, uh, these are the largest companies in North America that we have, you know, like Student Transportation America, Durham, scale of, you know, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty thousand buses, so they're very big operations, they're very cost efficient. Um, and our contracts are written, they give us a lot of flexibility, in particular with removing drivers. That is something that we're, you know, if we have a concern with somebody who, uh, we can have, we can request their removal and have that done fairly quickly, whereas if it was a different scenario, it would take more time. That's, those are the concerns we have. So we have, we have talked about and looked at it, and there's also just an economy to scale, that's an issue.
One more.
All right, comment.
And then I'm going to board member Willie and then we're gonna move on.
Um, when we talk about start times, I know that's been brought up a few times here. Um, I don't, I don't know that it's gonna happen this year, but I don't think it's going away. And I remember sitting here at the table and the biggest proponent, when I first was on the board for moving start times was Ashley Smith-Wares. I mean, she, I, I mean, she was a big proponent of moving the start time and the research that went behind why you should do that. And so I don't know that it's going away, it might or it might not, but it's still gonna be on everybody's radar just because of the research that's behind it. So I would just say we probably need, as we think through this, to consider this as a real possibility at some point.
Yeah, through the chair, I'm gonna wrap up, um, to piggyback there to the start time piece, especially you swing the page, middle school starts so late, it gets out late, and I think that, I've heard staffing, getting out at four, I'm a big up kid, there's a lot of staffing pieces that go with that, so there's some questions there. My bigger, uh, question is around, um, will classes come in? Electric vehicles, renewable energy, power? I mean, how, how is, does that, is that coming into play? I'll just plant that, there's enough to answer there. And then order of operation, so we, we have this presentation in front of us, someone that says August one twenty-four, which is, um, is fairly soon. So I'm wondering about what is the, what is our next steps here? And then you can throw in some electric, uh, vehicle, maybe some Tesla buses or something.
Sure, we do have, I'm rans through, I think STA, I gotta go with fifty buses. Currently underway already, we, they, we, they partnered with us.
I remember that.
Yep, so that's actually ongoing right now for, for, for that number of buses, which, you know, you set the infrastructure, the charging and, and all that. So we are doing electric vehicles, electric buses.
The hell of cost? Not yet.
I haven't, I haven't, we've seen, you've seen any results yet?
No.
Yeah, yeah, um, I think the buses, the buses have a, have a limited amount of range. You know, we use our buses in triple waves throughout the day, so you, so you got, you know, three days in the morning, then you're running field trips and activities and, and then you come back and do dismissal. It's a lot of runtime continuously and which limit, and we're big, so it's, it's, it's not easy to, to run that long.
We're having a sidebar conversation about how long it takes to charge a bus. Um, anyway, we're thinking it takes a while, I don't know, anyway. All right, um, that being said, uh, eight hours, eight hours for a full charge of a bus.
You got a hundred miles.
Little known fact, everybody watch Jeopardy, we'll see if that shows, I'll watch Jeopardy.
I haven't seen us running to do it.
All right, um, I will say at this point, um, thank you to assistant superintendent Sores. As I'm sitting here watching him do this presentation, I'm thinking, we're actually building schools at the same time and he oversees that too. I don't know how you do what you do, but we're very grateful that you do. Um, and I will say we look forward to seeing you tomorrow for some groundbreaking at Chaffey Trails in particular. I know one board member is excited.
Oh, can I say something about that? Oh, can I say something about that? There was a news article yesterday, News for Jax, that that had happened yesterday.
Gosh, did you?
I'm texting Dr. Green last night.
I'm in bed.
Does this, does this happen today?
We have to do groundhog, we would have to do.
I wish it's texting me back, no, it's Wednesday, I said, oh, it's hard.
Well, we would like to have more groundbreakings and less, um, transportation. Um, I, but thank, no, as always. As always, um, and she'd love to have a lot of them too, on, and be there. Um, anyway, thank you for your service, we can't do what we do without you, so thank you. Um, at this point, um, I tell you what, we'll keep going for about thirty more minutes and we'll take a break, um, at that. But now, Board Member, if you need to stand up, stand up. Um, I'm gonna move it back to Dr. Green for our next presentation, are we doing security?
Yes. Safety and security. Chief Burton and Mr. Sores.
Mr. Sores gets to stay with us.
Board member owns his car and just charges it.
I think we're, I think we're, we're a long way. A long way.
I know, I don't have any work, actually, we're talking to the.
If we came to a point where, I mean, to a trailer.
Yeah.
Without dying.
We got a problem. Okay, I got you.
With the stopgap.
I was gonna say, she was a bit unnatural gas.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I remember that too. Is it, yeah, something, something, I know.
Good morning.
And again, we may, you're, you've got a lengthy presentation and our break's probably gonna fall somewhere in that, so I may do a TV timeout. That's gonna let us. All right, I tell you what, we've had to step out, we're gonna go ahead and take ten minutes now. Uh, why don't we do that? We'll just go ahead and take ten minutes. I tried to get us to two hours before we do, but let's go ahead and take ten minutes. Sorry about that, I apologize. I'm having a, I'm having an elbow from my side and I'm taking, taking the elbow.
It wasn't cold, it was, it was not cold, it was.
Step out and it's a portmoneau.
Yeah.
Getting a little worse, thanks. I'm messing about, that killed worse. Yeah, and it's, elbows were very little, uh, it's, it's happened, so that's, yeah.
I had that.
Okay, there you go.
It's, it's, I read the.
It's sort of a.
Like it'll take a while and the stop skills were.
Kind of drive a pass, we're part of the pass, you know, so it's nobody.
So we'll ask less questions.
Yeah. Want to say this, I asked. Can you stop at the policy meeting? Stop! No.
Oh, yeah, please, attention.
I have. Because that's why I watch on here, is that people here, they're like, oh, that's fucking cool. They just say. Hey, how are you? Good.
We're trying to get there, never easy, but.
I'm not sure when, but it's always what.
Specific.
Cause you could say too. So. I have, I have like, and I think that's, that's so powerful as well.
I love it.
But I'm gonna work them.
I think it, I think it's.
I'll work them out.
Needs to be.
And I already spoke to Cory.
So you put her in the district initiative?
But then you all have that as well, they don't choose that.
Yep, okay.
It would have to change the policy.
Right.
State would require that. And some of those, um, districts have some choice, like you said.
Yeah.
I have. I.
You're very great.
You're bringing everything I want.
They can bring it back any time they want.
I mean, it's part of the, it's, it's, it's compliant with.
But if, if they were to. No.
These.
I don't see how you can.
Living, living.
Okay.
So. I thought it is, it's like, wish you were a guest.
Yeah, so I would. I did some stuff. Anything that was supposed to be like. I did something I did last night. I'm like, it's really bad. Start to redo that. I should do it. But you know, some say cheese. Close. She like.
You didn't. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, um, either, I was, I was up town, but it was.
Why?
Right, right.
Four years ago.
I thought, and I, right, and I, and I talked to her, I think, several times, and so, and I'll, I'll support it. Is there, is there a lot of, is there a lot much of, I think you wear.
Oh, yeah.
I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't.
There's a base company, but there's an overpass in the road, it's a slight.
I've done your guys. Cause our. Should be going in today.
And, um, all that, the threshold, it used to be.
You know, Mike, dude, this woman, this specialist, I'm like, she's not love.
What makes you get hurt bad?
So she's like, oh, when she got, but that's good. Nothing is found.
She just, she told me, she only drives. You don't want to do no power steering.
I had to.
You're the car.
Oh.
You think it's awesome.
Yeah, you just.
But. Not that day.
I keep it in my office.
So, you know that little teenager John? A little muscle member, yeah, I, I just, I'd overcome.
Yeah. And so I just.
It's so stupid.
Yeah, I went, I went to church.
For scary, was with a guy.
Uh, when you. And I was nine years, I wasn't a member of the church. So I walk in and I'm like, oh, blankets. Yeah, for someone that's getting cold, that's so nice. And, um, and someone goes, that's not what we get, that's what we get. Did you remember that? And I was like. Okay. I was like, alright. You get the air conditioning is colder. I thought it was a bunch of blankets for the cold. Then I, then I did take a better look, I had tambourines and stuff. Those are the kind of hits. It was so cool, it was, it was, um, where candidates, some church went on, where they invited a bunch of candidates to come speak. And they did a, I don't know if it's called a scare room, so whatever, it's, yeah. Cause I'm sorry, it's such a heat. I know, that, maybe that's where my brain, you know, I have my strengths and I have my weaknesses, but I, he said, no, what they are.
That's good, it's good now, but.
Um, so that was, it was, uh, it was interesting. Oh, thank you. I knew it was cold, so.
But I can't like.
It's actually a ski jacket. It doesn't look like much, but it's. It's one of the.
Got about four more minutes.
Until it really. And I will say, I've watched it a hundred times, it's starting to lose its seal. Where, um, the wind's not supposed to blow through it, which does mean it's not really. I think, uh, it's an. Um, it's a motor. Outside.
Yeah.
The cafeteria. Nice. I remember Amy's turn at the beach. That's where Amy started to speak, that's where I would give all my ski pants to.
I know.
And I, yeah. Well, I just bought everything black, so my, from my oldest daughter, her size, she bullied down. All the kids just had. Yes.
So I do, it's Wednesday.
And I look, I can make a, I can scarf on a hat early, but.
He did a card black.
Yep, and it's all these black things and, um, um, now Jack.
You can do the lights.
We went to his turn about two and a half years ago.
So we can play with, um.
And there were a pair of burnt ski pants that were brown.
Well, that sucks, it's like.
But they were actually. Yeah. Label on the inside. That's a. Yeah, you know what I mean, you know, it's, it's like, no, it was, it was just like a ski pant. And so I'm like, these are tall bucks. And I was like, do you care if it says, whatever it is, what it was inside, it's like a, a tag.
Yes.
And he goes, no, I don't.
I almost, no, I almost.
Yes. Twenty bucks. Here's the, like, they're neat as.
Do you want to?
They're just flat, they're, they're the ladies size, cause they're.
I feel fine, I don't wanna come back.
That really is great, man, yeah, they can eat around ladies.
They decided not to do it.
I'm like, that's fair.
I know.
And they don't, and they, they don't say anything, yes, like. It's, it's.
So I can't ride a bicycle.
Glitter years.
You need more degrees.
Right, right.
Since you don't wanna ride bicycles.
Alright, we're gonna give it about one minute.
Take you back under and.
I'm sorry. Oh, she's talking, okay.
They put you on this, um, crank.
Don't you.
They put you on the crank.
Find something, find something, get a Chris, get your somebody.
Oh, that's a good idea, where did they get?
I made up the main crank. I don't know where it really is.
Yeah.
But it's only one.
Yeah. Is that the one in. I was trying to.
Looks really good.
Oh, you're kind of. Charges that you. My son has a plug.
Are you able to go Thursday night?
I'm gonna be, I'm calling my.
I don't, it's to you, alright.
Meet people.
Alright, let's go ahead and get started.
Let's go.
I didn't know how.
Certainly.
Pay attention.
Red and blueberry fall, thank you. It's, and also.
Again, it's a good step.
None of those, cause I like.
Oh, yeah. I like that.
Alright, let's go ahead and get started, if I can have everybody get seated. Alright, okay. To Dr. Green, I'm gonna turn it over to you to intro this item and then we've got Chief Burton and several others ready to go.
Alright. This is our presentation on safety and security. So we also added with the absent sales tax, the safety and security upgrades that we are doing at all the schools. So we kind of put it all together. So this presentation will be a combination of Chief Burton and Mr. Sores.
Good morning, uh, to the board member and to all board members. Glad to be able to do this presentation for you today to bring you up to speed on where we are in the area of security and safety. Just wanna preface for us right now, something that we already know, but we don't always think about. Hundred and twenty-nine thousand children in our district. Ninety, a hundred and ninety-eight schools, including the charter schools, which means I have responsibility for the charter schools as well. We have between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand at a minimum guardians and parents that come to our schools every single day. It is a large task. You look at my first slide here. You'll see all of these things we do, the video surveillance, visitor management. We don't do the shot spotters right now, but it may come in the future. All of these things we do to keep schools safe, the anti-bullying programs, we have the emergency operations plan, active shooter. Really what keeps our schools safe are all of us collectively together doing these things. It's not just one program, one measure. It's a combination of a lot of different things and we're going to cover those things. This is why we do it. To prevent these types of things. Last year, it was Yuvaldi that got us in this meeting. This time it's Tennessee. We wanna prevent this from happening here in our district. Just a few things I'm gonna cover, these are objectives. Talking just a little bit about the culture and campus environment, also safe school legislation, and there's a lot that has come out of this last legislative session, training that we go through, little health aspect of it, and then we'll talk about a K nine unit, unit that'll be after, um, the facilities presentation.
And just as an FYI, we'll take you through slide twenty-two and then do questions there. That's kind of the break between his part and facilities when I looked at it last night. So just FYI for question purposes. Thank you, I apologize.
Often I ask my, uh, uh, the, um, employees in the school district, how do your students and your teachers and administrators feel about your school's safety? And I asked my own son, I have a middle schooler, and I asked him as recently as last night. I said, how do you feel about safety in your school? Do you feel safe? And he had that look, cause he's very particular. Um, he thought about it, he said, Dad, why shouldn't I feel safe? And I said, think about it a little bit more. I said, what about the drills? When we do the drills, how do you feel about that? He says, sometimes, I said, are you doing them right? Are you going into your corners or what? He goes, yes, sir, we are. Some kids are laughing sometimes and playing. And then he said, we had a code drill though, a few, uh, code red a few months ago, and I was scared. And when he said that, it almost broke my heart. My son is a football player, he's taller than I am, he's only thirteen, he's a big kid. And I could imagine him hungering down in a corner because he was scared. We do all of these things to create a learning environment where our kids don't have to be scared. That's where we wanna get to. All the security in place, but create that environment so they can learn and not have to worry about safety and security. And you'll see that campus environment always have a different mindset about what safety and security should be. I get it all the time. Dr. Green will send me the constituent, uh, concerns and everybody has a different aspect of what we should be doing. But the bottom line, we all have the same common goal. And we take all of these into perspective. And Dr. Green takes all of these, um, seriously and we respond to all of them, whether it's, um, companies that are asking us things, or citizens, or parents that are asking us things. So let's get into it. We got a lot of legislation coming out of the last latest legislative session. You'll see all of these various uh, house bills and legislation that came up. And I'm just gonna go very quickly over these, give you just kind of an overview. That three zero point one five, that's dealing with the Guardian program. They boosted up the Guardian program and now they've extended it to private schools at their own cost. So it's not gonna cost the district anything. They have to do it. But guess what? After they passed the law, I got five to six different calls from private schools on how can we, and I said, contact the sheriff's office. But I will help you. And in the past, be honest with you, I've had two private schools contact me last year about security. I feel like I'm the school safety specialist for the county and I have to work and help all children. So I'll go out and do their assessments as well. The one zero zero one point two one two, it's actually a bill that has created what we call a unified search tool. It's, it's gonna be statewide, where we're going to put information into a unit, a one single search tool where we'll be able to pull out information where, um, media threats are made in other counties. Um, where fortify information, fortify Florida information in this other county. So it is a central repository for a lot of safety information. The state has never had that before. One zero zero one point three three, charter schools, of course, you know, we've been extended, our school police department now can actually make arrests at charter, on charter schools. And so that's gonna create a different dynamic for us, but we're working with the sheriff's office to get through that. The one zero zero two point four two, that's dealing with the private schools again in the Guardian program. The one zero zero two point four two, that's dealing with the private schools again in the Guardian program. The one zero zero seven point two five, transfer of records within three days. Whenever a kid or a student comes from a different county, we take to a, send them to another county within three days. We have to transfer those records and those records will have to include threat assessments, mental health issues that they may have and other things that are related to safety. So we can depend on other counties when they send students into our district, they are supposed to send that information to help us keep our students and our schools safe. The one zero zero six point zero seven, um, other mandates in the Marjory Stoneman Douglas. It's a long one, I'm not even gonna get into it. One zero zero six point one two one, the K nine program, which we'll talk about later, I'm really excited about that. And one zero zero six point one three, the Cessar, um, reporting and zero tolerance, um, has been upgraded quite a bit. But we did that, um, went through, um, quite a few meetings, um, with Dr. Green, with the staff, and, um, upgraded all of those changes, and so we are on point with that. Keeping schools safe, how do we do it? As in accordance with Marjory Stoneman Douglas, all of our schools have someone on campus with a gun. We can do it through four different ways, four different ways of coverage. Safe school officers, they work for the district, they are our police department. School resource officers, they are the Jacksonville Sheriff's Office and the Beaches Police Departments, which of course we have made, um, MOUs with to work the schools. Guardian program, which we have here in the district, board very familiar with, you voted on. And then the Contract Security Guard Company, that we've extended that, um, contract, thank you very much, um, to twenty of those guards. And I tell you, they are working out very, very well. We've had no complaints and they have just jumped right in and become a part of the district. And just a small breakdown, so we have twenty J S O officers, thirty of our own guardians, it fluctuates around thirty. Um, then we have twenty of the, um, um, allied guardians, two of the Beaches Police Departments, and then the rest are our officers, about a hundred and two, a hundred and three. Last time we had the meeting, we talked extensively about the Guardian program and we talked about fifty percent retention rate. And I said, how can we get that retention rate up? So I decided to hire them one week early before they go in training to get them in firearm training. So now we're up around seventy-five, eighty percent pass rate and this last one, we only had one. So we have three, four in the class now. Um, we got them a week early training and I'm excited to see how many of them pass cuz they're all women. Girl power, I love it. Yeah, so we're gonna have a really good, um, really good group come through, um, through this, um, this session with the Guardian training, so. Training will for our police officers and our guardians. We continue to do the active assailant training, you know, we had the big training, uh, exercise at Atlantic Coast in Octo, in, um, uh, December of last year. It went very well, but we did see a lot of gaps that we had and one was in communication. And so I, um, got together with the sheriff's department, actually all of the, um, emergency responders in the district and we're going to have a big communication, um, a big communication development program, um, to ensure that our communications are, um, in line with what we need to do when we have an emergency. Um, cuz we did have some gaps. And in any of these police, any of these school shootings or any of the shootings, the number one issue is communication when you see an after-action report. So we're gonna try to make sure that we are solving any issues that we have. We are excited that the sheriff's office this summer, July twentieth and July twenty-eighth, they are going to do what is called a single response training. We have one person with a gun on every campus. That means they have to stop the threat, even at their own expense. We train them to work in teams. We're gonna train them now to work individually, how they individually stop that threat until help arrives. And we get help there quicker than most agencies do because we have schools in close proximity. So that, we're excited that that training is coming and J S O has offered to do that for us. Of course, we have radios on all of our campus, our decon radios, that's district, uh, um, communication, district emergency communication radios. We just spent, um, a lot of money on new radios. Every school has one, all department heads, all departments have them. And then charter schools are going to leave them from us as well. We'll provide those to the charter schools and most of them have them now, but we had to buy new ones because they are, um, at the end of life. Of course, those charters, those radios, decon radios give us direct communication to our communications center, the police communications center, which is direct communications to law enforcement, all law enforcement. And then we also have our communications, we deal with allied, we've given allied all of our, um, S S A radios because they have to be able to communicate with us. And so our S S As mean our guardians, radios. So we have communication that flows back and forth. Training, 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 training. We are constantly in a training mode, not just in our officers, not just in our guardians, but also in our teachers and our administrators in our schools. So I love you guys, that is the training for our administrators. Um, then the run, escape, hide, that is our training for our students. And then if you go into our SharePoint site, there's other training, but we don't want the public to have access to that. And you'll see Armor One is a part, a small part of our training. We do active shooter training for our teachers and staff. Armor One, they provide, uh, an assistance to that, to that training. It's only for teachers and, and staff, it's not for the police. They don't have a, they have a class for police, but our, um, active shooter training class is adequate. And this is our emergency procedures manual. Yeah, it's pretty thick. All of our administrators, teachers have to be, um, they have to be up on this, these procedures. It covers everything that you could think of. There's all the phone numbers and so they have this as a part of their, um, what's the boxes you call them, Dr. Green?
Black.
The black box. So people all over the, all over the state are asking us what's in our black boxes, so. So. Armor One, that was in the news with us, um, lately. So you'll see, um, Armor One has, of course, we've been in contact with them, um, since last year. And it's been a process. This process normally takes, according to, um, Tom Sees, their president, a year and a half to two years for schools to implement. We had to take that training. We're not just gonna give our, um, employees a training that we don't evaluate. So we had to take that training, evaluate it, look at all of the videos and, um, we had a team that do, that did that. It was headed by Dr. Krisner, thank you very much. Did a very, very thorough job of going through that. We asked them to take some things out of the training that we thought, um, were sort of political and we didn't want to have that exposed to our, um, employees. And so now the evaluation has been completed. And so now we're in the process of, um, providing them all of the information they need to have our employees get access to that training. I would rather the training start, um, before school starts because if we did the training now, they're getting ready for summer, they're testing, their minds are not on this training. So I'm gonna ask Dr. Green this weekend, look at doing it at the beginning of the year, when they are doing all of their other training, so it'll be fresh on their mind. Of course, all of our schools have, at our high schools, middle schools, at least a hundred and fifty cameras. We are getting more and more cameras in our middle schools, I mean, in our elementary schools, um, thank you, Jim Culver. Um, getting more and more cameras in our middle schools and we're doing that because we are getting those grants, um, each year from the, um, F S A. School safety drills, exciting news about these drills. I have, um, I have some big concerns with these drills and all of the, all of the state and all over the country, people have had issues with these drills because they create a lot of, um, anxiety for our little kids. The state this year has decided they are reevaluating and revamping the drills and I think that is, um, just about a done deal. We're only gonna do four active shooter drills this year where we were doing ten and they're coming in forty-five day periods. And then we're gonna do six emergency drills, including the fire drills. So that should come out in writing and we will make sure that all the schools at the beginning of the school year are, um, we're ins, we're ensuring that they are, um, up on that policy. Ms. Alyssa Allendeth, of course, Alyssa died in the Parkland shooting and because of her death, um, a new law came out, Alyssa's Law, and it's the Panic Alert System. I actually looked all over the country, there are a lot of states that have followed Florida in creating the Alyssa's Law. Um, and so, of course, this is our Panic Alert System. Right now, it's a Raptor system on our phone with the app and you know, you went through the strategic, strategics, um, um, proposal and so we're looking at moving to that and it's a system where you have a button, you don't have to worry about an app and, uh, the wifi and a lot of other things that would hinder the, uh, Raptor system. So we're moving to that and, um, we have been in comp and, um, we have been in compliance with this law since the beginning. We were one of the first districts to do it and there are still a lot of districts that are not in compliance. The behavior assessment teams, we know we have to have one at every school. They evaluate every, every threat that comes in, no matter how small that threat. There was an article in the paper that said we had two hundred and seventy-six threats, we provided that information. And people are saying, how can you have that many? That's so many. We have almost two hundred schools, we get threats at charter schools. I had two on yesterday that called me, charter schools called me about. So we have a hundred and ninety-eight schools, it's not hard to get two hundred and seventy-six schools, um, in a six or seven month period. I mean, uh, uh, um, threats. We evaluate every threat. If a kindergartner says, I'm gonna get my gun and shoot you, my daddy's gun and shoot you, we're evaluating that threat to the fullest. We call a home, we go out to the home, we look at what does this child need every single time. Because the time you don't do it, a six-year-old is going to shoot a teacher. And this is why we do it every single time. In addition to that threat assessment team, there are four people on it. You have a teacher, instructor, administrator, certified counselor, and law enforcement. Well, New York, new law this, this, this year, this session, now you have to have a person on that team that knows that student. Be it administrator or someone that works at the school that knows that student. Now, they are not an official member of the team, but they are there to provide information. F S A, every school, Florida Safe School Assessment Tool, every school, every year, we have to do this. Four hundred questions, every school, and guess who has to read them? Every charter school. And this is the aggregate, um, report that I give to the board on how we then, um, determine what monies go where and what schools need enhancements. So this is a confidential document, I'll need that back later if you wanted to see it, but it's, um, it's quite an undertaking. We start in May, we have until the fifteenth to, um, to make sure it's in, or Oc- October first and then we, by October fifteenth, I have to present it to the board. Our family reunification plan, we were one of the first districts to get it in. This is our family reunification plan, it's a really good plan. Um, this year, I was fortunate enough to be asked to be on the state family reunification plan and I actually wrote the, um, communication plan for the plan that's going to be coming out, um, here in the near future, probably around, um, August first. The, and it's for district, not our district, it's for districts that didn't have a comprehensive plan. Fortify Florida, of course, our app, we get these all day, as a matter of fact, I just got one a few minutes ago. Um, people are calling in, giving us information. We got one over the weekend, um, that was kind of intense, it took us about two days to investigate it, but everything turned out very well. But we get these all the time, we encourage, if you have not downloaded the Fortify Florida app, please download that app. Anyone can send an app, a, a tip to us. We respond and investigate everyone, we have to put in all the information, it goes into F D L E, Office of Safe Schools, they are reviewing those all the time, but we are always up to date on, um, making sure those are investigated properly. Mental health, lot of, um, legislation in the field of mental health and dealing with schools. Um, for us, we, Katrina Taylor is our, the head of our mental health, um, I guess, department, as we could say, and, uh, she does an excellent job of ensuring that people are trained, ensuring that we are in compliance with a lot of the legislation that we have to, um, deal with when it comes to the mental health of our children. And we know that, um, most of our children coming out of coded, COVID, a lot of our kids have to resocialize themselves and, um, it's been difficult for a lot of them, but they're starting to get better. One of the biggest things, though, is we have to have eighty percent of our entire district trained on mental health first aid. Um, and, um, that is a heavy undertaking, heavy undertaking, yes, ma'am.
To the chair, I just wanna correct this, it is not the entire district, it is everyone who has interactions with students, so.
I wanna.
Because we have to track this information. It's not eighty percent of entire district, it's eighty percent of everyone who interacts with students, so.
I stand corrected. Okay, thank you, Dr. Green, for that.
And today we are at eighty-one percent, eighty-two percent. So today we're at eighty-two percent, but just one.
Okay.
Somebody's gonna ask, Dr. Green, have you had your training? Well, I'm not one of the individuals who is required to have the training, but, no.
All right, thank you. Okay. As I said, we've done three, um, community, uh, security presentations last year and, um, we'll probably do. And um, we'll probably do more. Then what we emphasize the most is if you see something, say something, speak up, speak up, speak up. Because in every one of these shootings we've had, we've had, or whenever there is some type of um violence, somebody knows something. So that's what we emphasize, see something, say something, and I'll take questions.
This is the gap between, we'll go to facilities next, so any questions at this point? Remember her?
I have a, a, a couple, for, thank you very much for this presentation and I'm. Happy to hear that there's going to be some adjust- adjustment in the frequency of the training. I remember uh being in Tallahassee, having conversation with legislators. Um, shortly after Parkland, within a couple of years, and there was no flexibility in that adjustment. But I'm glad as time has gone on, um, there's gonna be some adjustment there and, and thank you for your leadership. It sounds like even at the state level for helping lead in security. Um, I, just a, a couple of, of things, um, I have one question when it comes to um ESER. Um, I have been under the impression that incidences are recorded or reported to ESER. That are student-related, does that also, do we report Cessar?
Cessar.
Cessar, okay, Cessar, um, but so reported to Cessar are student-related, does that also include? Teacher or employee incidences, are they supposed to be reported to Cessar as well?
Uh, through the chair, Board Member Hershey, if it is considered a threat um to the school or to an individual.
Okay, so.
It will be reported.
A threat to harm, I mean, alright, so that there could be some, okay.
And, and, and you'll, and if you reference certain incidents that have occurred, occurred in the past. Yes, we have had to report those to Cessar that are dealing with employees.
Okay, thank you, alright, so I have two more things. One is, you touched on the Guardian program and how we are handling that. With legislation that is in Tallahassee now, that is looking to expand that program. Do you foresee the board having to revisit the conversation about. Uh, teacher volunteers for Guardian to help if that legislation moved forward? Or do you think we would be able to staff it, um, as currently if it was expanded to more than one person on campus with a gun?
Well, we are able to staff now, we are totally staffed in all of our schools. And there would, in my perspective, be no reason for us to have to do that. With all of the different types of coverage that we use. And then, from my perspective. Teachers focus on teaching. And I wouldn't want a gun in a classroom. Unless it was someone that came into that classroom and, and didn't have to stay in that classroom. Because students are curious and they will find something. So the legislature right now, they've expanded it because of private schools. And I haven't heard much more information about expanding that to um teachers. Because it's already available if a district would like to do that.
Okay.
But.
That's awful.
Suggest where we are already.
Cause I have just one more thing, I wrote down, I know it's in here, but I wrote it down on one of your earlier slides. It said campus environment is the shared mindset and expected and accepted actions and practices common to the school community. And um, I have a member of my family who um has been substitute teaching. And um, I am still concerned about the training that takes place for substitute teachers. From our current substitute employer, ESS. And um, I do think that the district needs to have uniformity. What information uh substitute teachers have regarding uh lockdown and what to do. Um, when I, still haunted by a conversation I had with one of my niece's friends. Who said, oh, we were on lockdown and we had to tell the substitute what to do, that's still in the back of my head. Uh, but I will say uh that it has brought to my attention that uh King's Trail. Provides a very thorough notebook to inform substitute teachers. And I have shared that with leadership, uh but I am sharing it publicly because I believe that we need to have. Uniformity in the district as to what is expected and what, what actions substitute teachers take when they're on our campus. Because we have a lot of them and I just bring that up, I mean, sometimes you have, you have to be like, you know. Cracker Barrel or Starbucks or Chick-fil-A, that this is what we do everywhere, it's not just, we do it well at this one school. And when it comes to school safety, specifically with substitutes who are in different places every day. I just want to publicly say, I think we have a responsibility as a district to ensure. That thorough information is provided for s- for substitutes and it's my understanding that King's Trail does an excellent job of that.
Through the chair to Board Member Hershey, I am gonna go to King's Trail and then I'm going to speak with um Mrs. Schultz. Um, I think they are responsible for hiring these substitutes, so maybe we can start there. And you are right, it needs to be um something that um our substitutes feel comfortable. Um, being on our campus with, so I will definitely make that a priority.
Board Member Joyce, um, yeah, I wanted to um kind of speak a little bit about the Guardian program. Um, you know, I know that as, you know, you described the Guardian program. And arming teachers and teachers being in classrooms with guns and you don't support that. But I think that that's one way of looking at it, um, and I feel like the board at least needs to have a conversation around. Different ways that that could be perceived. And so, you know, maybe it's not necessarily a teacher, it's a principal. Um, I have a principal at one of my schools who's a West Point graduate. Um, definitely, you know, offices in the beginning of the, at the beginning of the, you mean in the front of the school. Not that he or she would want to be a part of that program because it would be voluntary. But if somebody walked in the door, uh, I can promise you without a shadow of a doubt, they wouldn't get very far. I know that for a fact and she's very, she's trained to do that. Um, there's also other teachers or administrators or assistant principals in our school system. That are not necessarily in the school, you know, in the classroom every day. And I just feel like we need to have a conversation around what potentially that could look like to make sure our children are as safe as possible. It doesn't, I know that a lot of people get very um concerned when you think about. A teacher with a gun on the side of their, you know, person, that's not what this is. This is a co- this is concealed carry, you walk all the time around the city of Jacksonville and people have concealed carry permits. And they are carrying, but you don't know that. Um, and so to keep children as safe as possible. It doesn't necessarily look like what everybody thinks it looks like and it could be on a voluntary basis. And I can assure you that it takes a long time and you mentioned getting these. Uh, Guardians trained and they can't pass the test, the shooting requirements. Well, we do have ex-military people in our schools that could easily pass those, those tests. And it would make our schools safer, so I feel like, you know, that I think it's worth a conversation. And the different scenarios around it and I think that um, at the end of the day, it. Students would not know, actually employees would not know who has a concealed carry permit on the campus. They don't necessarily have to be in the classroom, um, but in my mind, sometimes this would be even safer. Than some of our current Guardian, our security guard necessarily on campus. Like, these are people that are, in my opinion, way more trained and equipped to keep children safe. Than what we currently have sometimes on these campuses. Um, so I just wanted to make that point because I think it's, it's an important point, at the end of the day, our children need to be protected. Um, and then I wanted to kind of ask another question around. Um, the training for teachers, I know we talked about. Armor one, we talked about, we already have training in place that, you know, our teachers are going through. So I, I kinda wanna understand the difference in district training, what we are currently providing. To our uh teachers and our faculty and our staff, what is, how does Armor one different? Um, is it gonna be required? Um, you know, what does that piece look like? And I, I'm assuming what I'm hearing from you is it's pre-planning is probably the best time in your mind to sort of. Do this kind of training, so I kinda wanna know the difference between what the district's doing now. Our, if we're bringing Armor one or we're vetting it, so we can't bring our, bring Armor one into the loop. Is it either or, you know, what does that look like for teachers?
Um, through the chair to Board Member Joyce, thank you, um, a couple of things. One, um, if the board would, wants to take up the conversation about the Guardian. I'd be more than happy to provide information objectively, so you get a full scope of what it would look like. And so I'd be willing to do that, just give you information. When it comes to the Armor one training, it is just a supplement. We do active shooter training mandatory by the state every year with our teachers and administrators. Armor one is a one-time, one and a half to two-hour online training that you can do at your own pace. One time, it is a supplement, a lot of what they do um is in our training. But it's not as comprehensive as our training is, so that's the difference.
And so it's gonna be uh required or is it going to be just a teacher says, I want some additional training? They log on their own time and go through this particular PowerPoint or whatever that is.
Out, through the, through the chair, all the teachers, since it's paid for, will have. We, we have a spreadsheet, they're all gonna have, um. We have all of their names in the spreadsheet, we give it to Armor one and then they will be sent an email. It is not a mandatory training that we have to, like the state, but we encourage them to take.
Okay, um, and then following up with the Armor one question. Um, I know that you indicated that you vetted it, you've taken things out. That were um political, what is that specifically, what did that, what does that mean?
I can, I can tell, I'm through the chair, we took out any mention of the NRA.
Okay.
Right, and because we know that there are gonna be people that support, people that don't. And we didn't want that to be a center part of people um focusing on that. Um, and so anything that was in mentioning to that and, and, you know. It's a private company, Armor one, and they partner with a lot of different other companies. So, but that was one that we, we felt like needed to come, to come out, so it wouldn't be any controversy.
So one final question through the chair to Dr. Green, when the district went into partnership. And I remember we all came together at city hall and, you know, this was a big announcement from uh the mayor. That we were, they were gonna do this, was there any conversation, um, I, I'm not sure I recollect this. Was there any conversation before um this announcement and looking at the material? You know, was it useful to the district or was it basically, you know, we are gonna give you this much money? This is a program that you can utilize and then did the district participate financially at all within any of this?
Chair to Ms. Joyce, no, the district did not participate financially at all. To my recollection, it was, we had this, would you please come to me and partner? No, we had, we did not see anything and we were trying to be good partners. So we were like, what do you, help us understand? And in my interview, I said, we have to work with them, we have to first figure out how could we partner with Armor one. So no, we were given, we weren't given anything and so Dr. Krisner and her team spent hours and hours and hours going through. Every single video and said, hey, there might have been things that were just too. I don't wanna say violent, but too violent, we would say, mm, no, we can't use that video. Or going back and forth saying, um, you know, you're advertising this particular company, we don't think that should. Because if we're going to put it out in front of our, it, it had to be objective and not the. Saying the district was supporting this or supporting that, so it did take a long time to go through all of that.
Okay, very good, thank you, and my final question is, I don't recall how much money the city of Jacksonville spent on Armor one, do you remember?
I have no idea, chief, but maybe you.
No, it was.
I have no idea.
It was like thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty-six.
Yeah, it was like a two-hundred, two-thousand dollar contract, but then the city ended up, there was a grant, there was a grant and then the leftover was thirty-six.
Yeah, the cost to the city was thirty-six because of all the other, nothing grand.
Thank you, alright, other questions?
Uh, Board Member Willie. Thank you for the half the presentation so far, um, you talked about two hundred and thirty-six threats, can you sort of. Scaffle that down, two hundred and thirty-six threats, credible threats, like, cause that's really what it's about. Cause in my, I mean, I get text messages all the time, there was threats, you know, students do a lot of different things. But I wonder about credible threats, cause that's, I think, um, a big question.
We haven't done the, uh, through the chair to our Board Member Willie, we haven't done the assessment. Uh, the credible and non-credible or substantive, substantive or um transient threats as of yet. That will come more towards the end of the year and I'll be more glad, more than happy to bring that to the board. Most of our threats, though, are transient in nature and I just, one that we had yesterday. We get that every day, um, SSO at a certain school. Um, thirteen-year-old sus- uh, thirteen-year-old student made a statement that he was going to shoot up the school. Investigation revealed the suspect became angry during class when he couldn't come play a computer game. Suspect told everyone in class they should kill themselves. Substitute on the other, uh, substitute and the other student reported that they heard the suspect mumble he was gonna shoot up the school. Oh, this triggers a full investigation, where we know he was mad. Dr. Green and I made a video about the consequences of these types of things. And we play it at the end of the year and hopefully that the schools are playing them throughout the year. And these are most of our threats that come in um like this. But we investigate them very thoroughly and it takes a lot of um, um, time to do them thoroughly, so. But I will get that information to you, we have to actually submit to the um state. Um, through the FSAT every year, the substantive or, and the transient threats as well as a lot of demographic information as well.
Uh, thank you, through the chair, I know you've uh, do have some vacancies in the school safety offices. And the school safety assistance, how is that coming?
You know anybody? You know anybody, if you know anybody, please, 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 please. We have a great brochure on these school safety assistants, we are, we have four in class today, every school is covered. Say that at first.
Right.
Every school is covered and we have what's called flex officers when people are out. And quite often people get sick, they have doctor's appointments. They know one of my pet peeves is people taking off. That's why I'm here today on my birthday.
Same birthday.
At the birthday.
At the birthday.
So, and we have to get this coverage done, you know, so, but. Uh, through the chair to um, to Board Member Jones, um, we are having a lot of success. I actually swore in um two full police, three police officers this month, two yesterday and, and one last week. So we have a very robust um recruiting unit, I started a recruiting unit, we recruit all over the state. I like to recruit a lot out of Miami because we have a lot of Spanish-speaking students and schools now and so. And so I like to put those officers that we get out of Miami that can speak, um, Spanish at those schools. And we've had quite a bit of success with that. So we are doing well when it comes to recruiting. We've had very minimum attrition this year, although we are losing one officer on the fourteenth, um, just retiring. So, but we've retained, um, this year very well. As opposed to my first year here, I think we lost eight officers. So retention this year, I think we lost three, two to other counties, um, and one.
And when you look at the, the pay that we provide versus what we're paying the allied security company, uh, what is that difference on an annual basis? Do you have any?
The, um, as I recall from the presentation I did, um, through the, through the chair to Board Member Jones, as a presentation I did, um, probably eight or nine months ago to the board. So for a allied officer, it costs us, um, about fifty-six thousand dollars a year. JSO officers, uh, seventy-five thousand, seventy-two thousand five a year. Our officers plus their benefits, I think it's somewhere around fifty-three. That's with their benefits. Their base salary is right at forty-one. This year was the quickest negotiation, um, for the FOP and salary. Um, and so, um, we are, um, we're keeping up. But when it comes to allied, the thing is allied, they work, um, they don't work in the summers. And, um, they don't get the benefits of getting paid during Christmas holiday. And that's our selling point. As a lot, matter of fact, I've asked, they have been asked by many of allied, um, could they come and work for us? And I have to tell them, you can, but you're not gonna be promised your school. Um, you know, cause, because other people could take that school. So I haven't had a lot of complaints between all of the various groups on the pay. Thus far.
And I look forward to the information on the pluses and minuses of Army, uh, employees. Because one thing I understood with the, uh, Guardian program is you needed someone there to prevent the threat from even entering the school, one. Two, if an employee is off, a leave early because of sick leave or doctor's appointment, then what do you do then? You gotta have a backup. So there, there are a lot of issues that we discussed at the time when we decided we would do one. Uh, uh, um, staff for our schools because of those two main factors. One, you wanna prevent the threat. So if you're in a class or you in a meeting in the building and you have that threat, it's already in the school. Uh, and then if that person takes off, then you, you don't have coverage. And you're responsible. We are responsible to make sure that every school is covered with entire student. Look forward to that information. Thank you.
Um, I, uh, so we can keep on moving on the Armor One contract. I just wanna thank Dr. Green, um, and Chief Burton, um, cause when that hit the news, um, I made sure that I worked with them to provide an opportunity for all board members to hear what happened with that and to be able to ask any questions. So I wanna thank y'all for including that. I, I think we all understand a little better as to what occurred, so I appreciate that. Um, and then I think, um, at this point, uh, we've got Mr. Soros.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Usually you do.
I know, sorry.
I was reading, I was reading they.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Um, through the chair to, um, Chief Burton.
I just wanna, I was curious, does, if when we're recruiting, um, you were talking about Miami Day, but if we have, we have so many people that are coming down from out of state. Does the new sign-on bonus for police officers include school police?
Through the chair to Board Member Carney. Yes.
We need to put it on.
Read it. As a matter of fact, it should've been, that might be an old one.
Yes, a big red.
Yes.
And they do get the five thousand dollars.
Okay, perfect. That's what I, that's all I wanted to know.
The part of the chamber packet. We put that in the chamber packet.
That's, that's good. I'll make sure we get that on there.
Yeah, I think you're joining us for a, a new and whatever part at the end of the presentation that I, I know is the former high school region soup. I'm excited about what you're gonna share with me.
Yes, of course. It's just about the, the behavioral threat assessment team. My question is, when we look at what happened in Nashville, you know, in, in all of these, in all of these circumstances, when we have a student come in and have these shootings, we go back and look at social media or they go back and look at social media accounts of these, um, of these, uh, individuals. And there's always something there that would, has triggered. So when we have students that we are looking at in these threat, on these threat assessment teams, is the district looking specifically at their social media accounts?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce. Yeah, law enforcement can look at their social media account. When I say law enforcement, I'm speaking school police, whether it's JSO, they can. Um, that's why they're a member of the team.
I just want the public and everyone to know, we are looking at social media accounts.
They can't. School district people, we cannot. They have the authority to look at a student's social media. You know, we don't have that authority to just say, we're gonna, we can't trust them.
And the follow-up is, and that might be through the chair to Dr., I mean, to Chief Burton. If there is something that triggers, where there is a student and maybe they have armed guns and they, they, this is very, very, um, concerning. What is the next step? So the public knows what happens to that individual once the threat is made. We look at social media, or maybe this does not happen, where we have anyone, any student in, that, you know, we've investigated that has these big red flags on social media. What would be the next step from your department if that, um, occurred?
Um, through the chair to Board Member Joyce. So we have a lot of, um, issues we have to deal with. They're juveniles generally, so the privacy. When threats are made and it's to a school, we know it's gonna be public. We work with the communications division under Dr., uh, Dr. Pierce to get a statement out to the parents. They're not privy to our investigation, but we get that information out that a threat was made. And we say what type of threat, if it's a big concern. We then have a number of tools we can work with. We either, we have very good, um, investigators that go through social media and track down. I don't know of any we haven't resolved. Um, very, very few, very few. And then I met with the FBI, um, SAC, the Special Agent in Charge of the FBI. And her team, she came to my office, I asked for a meeting, or actually they asked me for a meeting, because they wanted to see what they could do for the district. And they have a very robust social media investigative unit. And so we now are partnering with them to use them as well. And then they can do follow-up outside if someone ages out. That's the big issue. Someone that ages out. We can track them at home. We can go to their homes, we can, but once they leave school, FBI then picks them up and they do whatever they do. It's a lot of different things to try to track these. And we work very well with the intelligence unit of JSO, hand in hand with all of our threats. Um, to, we go to their homes, we look at all of the social media. We have what's called a lease report. It is a, like a three-page report on every threat that we document, what we have done with this student. And as I said, it's a puzzle. That's a part of the puzzle. The threat assessment team is another part of the puzzle. The mental health is another part of the puzzle. So all of these things work together. The, 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 the district, the public may not know and they, and they probably shouldn't know all of the things that we do because of the privacy issues that we're dealing with children.
Sure. Who has jurisdiction? So once the, the threat has been made, we have, this is falls under a threat assessment. We have the threat assessment team together. Who is fi, who's making the final decisions about what happens to this student? Is it the school, state police department? And, uh, do they have jurisdiction over what happens to the student? Or is it JSO? Do they have jurisdiction over what happens to the student?
Through the, through the chair to Board Member Joyce. It could be any number. So if it's a code of, code of conduct violation, then it's the stu, the school. If it's a written threat and it's a substantive threat, they're probably gonna be arrested. Either by us, charter schools arrested by JSO. Then we will work with the state attorney's office, with DJJ to determine what the, um, um, what will be the disposition of that child. Whether they'll go to alternative school, which they do quite a bit. So it could be, it's according to the, the, uh, extensiveness of the crime or code of conduct violation, who ultimately handles it. So it could be the school, could be us doing arrest, could be JSO, could be the school saying, we're going to send the child to the alternative school. So it's just according to what the investigation records.
For purposes of time, we'll keep going now, cause we, we've still got a whole nother presentation and a half of, of this one left, so. Um, and we'll have some more question time at the very end of this as well. Mr. Soros.
Good morning again. Uh, the next part, we're gonna talk about the, the facilities, aspect of safety and security. When the master plan, facility plan was put together, you know, we had a number of schools that are, were effectively gonna be rebuilt on-site or they were gonna be, uh, closed and consolidated to a newly built building. So you had a situation where several buildings were going away. Why would you put money into them? But at the, on the other side of the coin was, we need to provide safety and secure enhancements to all schools. So we came up with what was called Security GAP Project, which was a, a safety and security focused project, limited scope. So that we would be able to put safety and security in all schools across the, across the district, but we would limit the amount of investment. These forty-one schools you see listed were the GAP Project schools. If you look at them, every one of them is part of some master facility plan where they're gonna be either rebuilt and/or moved and consolidated to a new school building. And the GAP Project consisted of storefront locks. One of the most common things found on our security walkthroughs of schools was unlocked classroom doors. So we went through a storefront lock that automatically locks every time you close the classroom door, takes that part. So if an intruder did get into a school, he would at least be confronted by a locked classroom door. And separately, Jim Colber, Information Technology, was going through and doing code-red external speaker improvements, right, to all school campuses. So those went forward to these schools as well to provide, you know, code-red, code-yellow, uh, hearing throughout the entire campus. So everyone could hear that. That, that seemed obviously very important. So those are the two aspects that all schools received as part of the GAP Projects. So if anybody asked, you know, well, what did you do with the schools that are being torn down? They at least got this level of improvement for safety and security. All campuses were touched. In the process of doing safety and security, we wanted to come up with what we were gonna do. We pulled several key experts together, developed a list, and then we came up with prototype schools, elementary, middle, high. And these are the components that are part of safety and security projects as a, as a whole. Not every school would receive these enhancements, because if a school was already adequately fenced and didn't need fence, it wouldn't have that component. But these are the areas we looked at. So we did the three prototype schools and the hours to show you different funding sources. The green check was the MFP. If there was a separate security grant, then we would use that funding. The key point there being, we didn't just start safety and security because of the MFP. It was ongoing every year, always being looked at, always trying to be funded. So we had separate grants, funded projects going on, and those were folded into this complete set for safety and security. So you can see things were funded maybe with an existing grant or, or another funding source and then other things that weren't, were picked up from the MFP. From, from single-point entry, the secure vestibule when you come in, the fencing, windows covered with impact film. So that if, if, if they were, it'd be very difficult, you can't beat them out or break them. If they were shot, they would stay intact. You didn't stop ballistics, but it, it did not shatter and break. Hard corners, obviously, sight lighting provided, you know, control with bolge, which is not as, not as commonly used based on the campus layouts. Line of sight, making sure that you restricted line of sight into the school. Signers with wayfinding and then access control with badge pass. Those are the major components of safety and security projects. Um, and just the complete means these three prototypes are done, completed. Including we, the badge pass system actually went in as well. But in that process, we discovered issues with getting parts and materials for badge pass. Mr. Colber's here, and then we experienced delays and I'll, I'll talk about that later. That's the one component that is, uh, more punchless than some of the projects. The process, you know, if we had, you know, over a hundred and twenty schools, we had to group together. We weren't gonna do one project per one school, so we had to figure, figure a logical way to group them. So almost by location, schools that were close together, proximity could be grouped. We looked at sister schools. So if you had schools that had the exact same design, and we would potentially try to link those to the same group. And, and then subcontractor synergy. There are a lot of schools where contractors just have worked in over the years and they're very familiar with those schools and very efficient. So where we could take advantage of that, we also did that as well and obviously helped reduce costs. Year one, you see the year one, seven groups and all substantially complete. Uh, the one, that's one item that's not fully complete is the badge pass system, and I'll talk about that. But the, the work required, it has been completed. Year two is underway, different completion dates, September twenty twenty-three, all the way out to October twenty twenty-three. We expect to be finishing those up. And, and, and year three final are underway through design, some construction, and we expect those to finish up by December twenty twenty-three. And, and, um, so we're, we're tracking, uh, I think ahead of schedule to finish, uh, safety and security work, minus some punch lists within the first three years, which is what we said we were gonna do. Uh, badge pass and control, I told you, we broke these out separately. Once, once we discovered the issue, uh, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong. I guess during, during the, uh, prototypes, we really discovered the problems with the microchips and getting, getting the materials and equipment. Just, we really couldn't get them in. So we were able to finish the, um, prototypes, but then on the year one, we had to pull them out into the separate project. So we're doing the badge pass control as a separate standalone. These are the year one schools, which we expect, you can see shipping April twenty twenty-three, July twenty twenty-three. So we expect to finish these up this year for, in twenty twenty-three for just the badge pass and access control system of, of these projects. Um, year two and three will also be worked and we expect to complete those within the three-year period. That's the key point. Um, new, new schools, Rush Pearson, i- if it was a brand, a brand-new school, we would put these components in the new school construction requirement. So if it's a brand-new school building, like Pearson, like Pickett, like Chaffey Trail, they would get this, uh, provided through the, uh, through the project to make, make sure that that was covered. And, and if you go back to the two, also on this particular project, you can see the height of the window. For the line of sight aspect here, we, we raised the window to not, to not give, uh, direct, as much direct line of sight. And this had like a film coating, so that if it was, you know, damaged, it would, it wouldn't fall through. But it, it wasn't as strong as for Southside, we were able to lower them. The whole glass window itself is resistant, so it's much more difficult to break, uh, much harder to get through. If you shoot it through, you can't, if you remember some of the horrific events where people would shoot out something, kick it and walk through. Very difficult to do here with this type of glass. So we're enabled to lower it a little bit, you get more direct light and you can't see because of the coating. You can't see into it, so you don't have a line of sight. That's a slight difference between Pearson versus Southside. Pearson, well, there's a little higher. Southside, we're able to lower them and instead of film, we went to an entire glass assembly that was, was, was resistant. Uh, for protection. And Southside stays. Evo, six-to-one units delivered, installation in progress. Twenty, we'll have twenty-three schools operational by the end of the school year, so that effort's ongoing now. Um, twenty-three schools include basically the, the high schools and, uh, you have alternative education schools as well included in there to make up that number. You can see the assembly in front of the entrances, how you go through there and you're detecting, you know, visual image of the type of material, equipment that we wanna be able to see that poses a potential threat to the school. And these are common elsewhere too, in large venues. And then lastly, K-nine, which I'm gonna turn it back over to.
He's stepped out.
He's in the bathroom?
No, he's right out.
He's right here.
These are cute dogs, um, and a great, uh, great effort. I bring him here to do.
That was longer than.
Yeah.
That was quicker than I thought, yeah.
All right. The K-nine unit. So I, months and months ago, I came to Dr. Green and I said, Dr. Green, I, I wanna start a K-nine unit. And she said.
That's the one.
Always about the budget. Always about the budget. So she gave her thumbs up. So we then explored starting a K nine unit, and this is why. Unbeknown to us, just last week, they passed this House bill and Senate bill that districts can now, um, be supported by K nine units. And they do that by partnering with companies to help them pay for the K nine unit. There are other agencies around the county, I mean, around the state that have K nine units. We went down to Miami, it's where we got, really got the idea. They have seven dogs, but they have three to five hundred schools. And so we decided, um, this would be a great, um, supplement for us because we have to depend on JSO anytime that we have to utilize a K nine. Normally through bomb threats. And we didn't, and their dogs generally, you have to call one in off duty. So they're not working twenty-four, seven. So we let this start in our own unit, and this is, you'll see what our mission is. And just, just some, some things about. And the biggest thing is to decrease the violence in the school. So we have in training, a K nine for gun detection. And that's what the law is centered towards, gun detection dogs. And then we have a drug detection dog, which is big because we have, uh, a lot of drugs that come through our, through our schools, just like in any other school, private, charter, public. But you'll see, and then for drug, for public relations as well, and article searches. Some of the dogs can go out, they can search for, um, clothing or something. Uh, one of our kids may have scotched off campus, and they can track. Of course, these are just some of the, um, other measures. We have a policy that we've written, it's been vetted by compliance. I think I gave the board a copy of that policy. And we took that policy directly from Jacksonville Sheriff's Office. They have a very robust K nine policy, covers everything. And so, um, we believe that policy is so- is solid in what we're going to, uh, in our unit, or what we're going to be doing. Looking at some of the other things here, I don't want to go over, you can read, so I don't want to. So these are our, our guys, and they should be coming up. So this is Maverick, is a Malinois, and this is our gun dog. And Officer Baker is the handler. And then our drug dog is, um, Gaz, named after one of our lieutenants, Lieutenant Gasnick, Gasnick, because she is the champion of this unit. We receive these dogs free of charge. We had to go to.
That was the only time I put my thumb.
She did. And so we have one from Northern Georgia, well, two from Northern Georgia. One, she didn't make it, she, she just wanted to be with her owner all the time. And then the other one we got from Alabama. And so I'll introduce you now to, who do we have first? Who do we have first?
Maverick.
Maverick, this is our Malinois, and this is our, our gun detection dog.
He likes his green ball up.
And so we've partnered with our law enforcement agencies. Jacksonville Sheriff's Office, we got the policy. The St. John's Sheriff's Office, they are training our dogs and certifying our dogs for no cost. And that is a big deal for us. St. John's, they train and play.
And play.
Every Monday, but now they are going to full-time training every day. These, uh, K nines will work every day in our schools, there's no part-time. Every single day, looking for guns, looking for drugs, keeping our kids safe. And so this is Maverick.
This is Maverick. Maverick. I'm Officer Baker, I was at Riverside High School for the last two school years, and this is, uh, my first police dog, so really excited to be here. I appreciate y'all giving us the opportunity to do this.
Thank you for your service.
You go by goose.
No, I did watch the new Top Gun, I was thinking about it. But yeah. You can toss it back too if you want.
Oh, sorry, Charlotte.
There it is.
And this is Gaz.
I'm sorry, now we're into the interactive part of this activity. Y'all all right over there?
This is our Jeremy Shepherd.
Sit, sit, sit.
And this is Officer LaConne. He doesn't say much. But, um, we are really, really excited, um, about this program. And it's going to, I think, really pay a lot of dividends to us in our school district. So I just wanted to have you all, um, get a look at our new employees. Um, and you'll see here, now, um, of course, take the certification, St. John's, weekly training. So this was our initial cost. Initial cost, and we've gotten all of that cost, um, taken care of. And so this is going to be our yearly cost, right at, uh-oh, right at twenty thousand dollars. But, um, we have already created a letter to get our sponsors, and I'm sure people will jump on this and want to sponsor the K nines for the school district. So we'll probably get a mul- multiple sponsors. Maybe we'll put a collar of a company's name or something on the dog. So we anticipate this not being a cost at all, uh, a negative cost really, uh, to our district.
Well, I will say, while, um, the handlers are here, did board members have any questions for the, for, um, Board Member Jones real quick?
How old are they?
They're both two, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, sir.
They have a good ten years, I guess, probably.
Yes, sir. And two years is about the, um, ideal time that you want to pick a dog for police work. They've matured enough, um, if they had any birth defects or health concerns, you would find them at about that timeframe. They both, um, just got a clean bill of health, they're good.
And the, uh, where, where do they stay at night? Do they stay with the handler or they, you have?
At home with the handlers, and they have police-grade panels that they stay in.
And I, and I will say that, uh, in visiting a warehouse, I was telling Director Burton about this. At the customs office, they had the dog go around the, the, uh, fence line every morning, check for drugs. And one of the employees left the drugs in their car, but the residue was in their pocket. And the dog discovered it, and that person had to be terminated. So we need to let our students know that if you, if you, if you're doing it, don't keep it in, don't put it in your purse at all. Because the residue can be picked up.
Yes, and we, we actually worked on some of that training last night. The, uh, gloves that the trainers had used to put out, uh, certain things. Um, Gaz is already picking up on cocaine and heroin as of right now. The gloves that they use to set those drugs out, he found the gloves in the trash can last night.
Board Member Carney had a question.
Yes, I was just curious what the rotation will be for both dogs throughout our school. So is there a specific schedule you'll follow, or, um, and how frequently will they be visiting us?
Um, through the chair, through Board Member Carney, we have not figured that out yet. Um, but they know they'll be working a lot. So, but I want to make sure we cover everybody's district. So, um, and, and, and we are aware of that. Um, so we haven't worked the schedule out as of yet.
I would love for you to provide that to us when, when that happens, so that we can be abreast of that.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I'd like to actually, I'd like to actually come hang out one day and walk through the schools.
I feel a picture for the board report next month with Board Member Carney continuing our trend.
Yes.
With a big Board Member Joy. Board Member Joy.
I'm just wondering how long have you been about training and begin training, begin training? At what point will they be trained so they can go start doing the work in our schools, fully trained, I guess?
Um, through the board, I mean, through the chair, I will let, uh, Lieutenant Gasnick handle, she's the know-all about this training stuff.
Um, they will start their full-time training in their official classes in May. It'll take four to six weeks for them to be certified, so they will be available the first day of school in the schools. They'll spend the remainder of the summer getting familiar with the schools and how they're set up, the floor texture and all of that. Um, so that they know what their environment is every day, and will, they'll be ready first day of school.
So, um, having once lived a life of, of supporting high schools at one point as a region soup, um, we used to have to wait hours on end. Um, two of the hottest days I ever had was waiting for a JSO office, um, dogs to come and search Fletcher and Riverside High Schools with the students all, um, in holding patterns and right before summer. So it was hotter than I'll get out. Um, it usually took a couple of JSO dogs to search a high school campus of that size. What's the thought process? I mean, I'm thrilled with this because sitting with thousands of children, waiting for dogs from JSO, and JSO is great, but they were often somewhere else and had to come from across the city. I mean, JSO was always trying to support us, but us having our own, given how many we have, like a, a large high school, will we be able to?
So, to the chair, so these are search dogs, um, for particular reasons. Normally when JSO comes in, it's because of bomb threats.
Right.
We've not had a lot of bomb threats recently.
I just want you to say something.
So, 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 but JSO, we'll, we'll continue to use them.
For that, okay. So we'll still need some support from JSO, this won't eliminate all of it.
Until we can grow our, our unit.
Till we grow the unit? Dr. Green, did you hear, we're growing the unit, we're growing the unit already.
The K nine community, K nine handlers are a very rare, rare breed of policemen, and they all work together. From Flagler County to Georgia, these guys train together at least once a month, if not more often than that. JSO is incredibly excited that we have these dogs. They may request to use our dogs sometimes, depending on what exactly they're looking for. Um, and depending on what we're searching for in a school, we may fifty-fifty, or JSO might just have to come do it if it is in fact a. A bomb threat.
Okay, I'm just, I will say, we used to wait hours for their dogs and so the notion.
Mandarin High School?
Yeah, yeah.
Mandarin High with the bleachers.
Mandarin High with the bleachers, yeah. There, there's meant some moment, so the idea that we could start the searches a little quicker, a little sooner. Anyway, could, could, thank you for the work, um, Board Member Willie.
Yeah, just real quick, is there any protocol around? I know it says like going into, doing appearances at schools. And so is there any protocol for the, the students or for folks to know like how to interact with the, the dog? Like, cause if they're going to see them, some kids are afraid, some kids are going to run up and attack the dog. And I know certain dogs that are trained in different ways, you have to approach them at points. Is there anything that along those lines?
So for classroom searches, there's a very specific protocol. Um, you go in and you explain to them, hey, we're going to come in and do a sweep. This is what we're looking for. If you have anything like this on you, you need to stand up right now and step outside. If you are afraid of a dog, you need to leave all of your belongings as they stand, get up, and then they'll go stand outside with another officer while the dog goes in and does the sweep. So no one's intimidated by the dog, no one is terrified, or the dog is, you know, right there, this, this close to them.
That makes sense. So if this, if something's on a person and the dog smells it, the dog does what? He doesn't like, he just sits?
Sits and looks at him.
He doesn't like, try to bite the?
No, no, she doesn't, no, no, no.
Give me that, you watch it.
Are you for the rest of my time?
All right, I will say, on, on that note, um, if you have any closing comment, and I think we'll take a five-minute break. Um, trying to let, we've got a board member who needs to stretch a little bit some, and so I'm trying to take a quick break. Any closing comments for you?
Oh, thank you all, um, and, and, and always we want to provide to the board and the public all of the safety features that we have. And we want, um, our parents to know that we are doing everything possible. Um, as a district, hey, that is by Dr. Green. Um, to make sure that your students are safe every single day.
And on that note, as our students are safe every single day, it is twelve ten right now, let's take a five-minute break very quickly.
We're going to have the mounted patrol.
Oh, can we have horses? Dr. Green.
The therapy dogs.
Dr. Green. Mounted patrol, mounted patrol. Had a request from.
A therapy dog.
Mounted patrol, therapy hor- therapy horse.
I'll, I'll be happy to do that.
That being said, we're going to come back at twelve sixteen now, twelve sixteen, taking a very quick break. Did he quit? So, do you have Netflix?
Yeah, we brought, and so the lobby is not, you can't yell.
And that's what would happen.
My husband and I started watching. Like Night Call, Night One, something like that. We're almost just a whole series, but the premises is FBI guy sitting in the basement of the White House and takes the dog.
That's where your radio spots.
Yeah, and you know, something happens, he gets involved. If you like act, the kinds of things.
Maybe it's not as weird. And it's, I think it's based on.
Yeah, it's obvious for saying that you shouldn't be concerned with that.
Okay.
That's probably what the teacher makes to John with his language. They've got to be very serious.
That's okay.
Are you a student staring at me?
I probably have.
Yeah, she's. Is that a nice little surprise?
I thought that might happen.
Yes.
Oh, the dog. I want to ride around the parking lot with the harp. A horse for you. I think, you know, for me. I remember my, did you remember that they used to come to air conditioning? You got the crank windows, you know, upgrade to get the air conditioning, like how far we come in our lifetime. I, I would, I mean, clear, not like party, yeah, right.
But like.
Stripes.
Oh.
Not real clear.
I mean, I know I'm gonna be on a test, but who cares about how you do?
Okay, I'll be there.
My next day.
How do you want this?
All right, we got two minutes.
Happy in the.
I mean, there's something. Yeah, okay, all right, let me look at.
I'm trying to find the class names that will fit in that need that level.
Let me look at.
So, one of the things that, um, might be.
It's no big deal, I'll get by with it. Yeah.
Thank you, I know, happy birthday.
I love you. Cause you have something.
It was cause he did this. So, I don't see people in like one of three ways, they see everything in one of three ways. Something smaller than them is prey, something the same size as them, and then something bigger than them is a bear. And did this. So he made herself, yeah.
About to get attacked.
I don't know about that dog, I'm seeing a bear, I'm going to be honest.
Yeah, he was worse.
The, the, uh, German Shepherd is not put your list of dogs.
Is that for our dogs?
I know, but they already went up.
With the canine.
All right, let's go ahead and get seated. Mr. Wright and company have exciting information for us. By the way, question. As we get started, so does our Vet Tech program provide the grooming for the dogs? I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we do have a Vet Tech program, we have dogs now.
I know.
Oh, they do, they're like. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Um, at this point, I will turn it over to Dr. Green for our final presentation of the day.
This presentation is directly tied to our strategic plan, um, one of the new initiatives on Duvall Ready, um, our soft skills readiness. So I will turn it over to Mr. Wright. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
I know.
So, um, good afternoon now. Appreciate y'all's time today. First, before we begin, just, um, February was C T E month. Um, we had some different activities across the schools and had a great partner in Southeast.
Duffy Southeast.
Duffy Southeast, a construction company. Um, provided shirts for all of our C T E teachers that say career technical education, so we have one of those for you today.
All right, yes.
Sometime in the near future, they'll be recognized as a partner as well, but, um, that was just one of the many partners that participate in C T E month during February. And those shirts just recently came in, so that was something exciting, we were able to give to the teachers and then just help, um, promote pure technical education awareness. Um, so this is about this to you, and if for some reason the size is not correct, we can change that. So, um, but today we are focusing on giving an update on our Duvall Ready Goal Three. Um, improving post-secondary readiness. We'll just kind of review the timeline, give you a reminder of where we are for this year, being the pilot year. Give you an update on the badges and what they look like and what parents can see in the portal now that students are earning those badges. Share some experiences, um, related to the capstone experience required for Duvall Ready. Let you know where we are in regards to numbers of students at grade levels in each of the components and then just next steps. So, um, just a reminder, we started this pilot year in the spring of twenty twenty-two with planning, engaging with stakeholders and principals, gathering survey information, goal setting, et cetera. Um, over the summer, we finalized our planning and scheduled out the timeline, determined the curriculum, did some integration things with Florida Ready to Work. Um, and we really started educating school-based designees, principals, uh, about the opportunities and how to access, and students began participating in the various curriculum components at the beginning of the school year. Um, throughout the winter, we continued to, um, just prepare our students, see where, progress monitor, refine as needed, and continue to get feedback from employers, um, on the process about how we can move the process, um, into the community more and make more awareness. And then here we are in spring of twenty twenty-three, we are about to have our first Duvall Ready graduates for this year, um, across the district in, in a variety of schools. So, um, the final steps for our seniors, but also planning ahead, preparing our, the rest of our high school students to be set up for success on this Duvall Ready pathway. And just again, a reminder, you all are probably familiar with all the steps it takes to receive the diploma, but wanted to put it in context. These badges here are actually the icons that parents and students see in, in the parent account. Um, and to receive the Duvall Ready diploma, our current seniors were really exempt from that eighth grade career exploration. If you recall, that some students had an opportunity to participate in that Junior Achievement Inspire in eighth grade, um, last year, but our seniors, our current seniors never had the opportunity to participate in it. So we just exempt them from that. So for our current seniors to earn the Duvall Ready diploma, they have to show mastery in each of the, uh, components that are listed above. Problem solving, a component of curriculum in Florida Ready to Work. Within assessment, communication is all, all the first four of those are curriculum within assessment. So problem solving, communication, team building, and professionalism all through Florida Ready to Work. In addition to participating in that, um, blended curriculum online and those individual assessments, they have to take the one-hour timed proctored assessment to earn the state of Florida, Florida Soft Skills provided through Florida Ready to Work. So those five components allow for the Florida Soft Skills Certificate. But to actually get the Duvall Ready diploma, you also have to participate in that capstone experience. And we'll go into that a little bit and share some of those experiences, um, to date. So this is what the, just a screenshot of a couple of students who participated in some of the, uh, earned the badges, I guess, participated in the curriculum and then earned the badges. This is what it looks like from the parent's perspective in focus. So that student that has two through seven are listed there. Um, they have, they're, they're Duvall Ready, right? That student, as long as they graduate, will earn the Duvall Ready diploma. You see that they've earned all the problem solving, communications, team building, professionalism, the soft skills certificate. And then number seven, they, they have been, they've successfully completed the capstone experience. And then the, the lower student has just completed one of the components, so they have one badge that is the Duvall Ready diploma problem solving badge. So that's what it looks like for parents as they go into their parent, uh, account in focus. Or the students can see those as well.
So the final part of earning Duvall Ready diploma is, um, the capstone project. And because we didn't want to narrowly define it, there are so many different capstone options, we did categorize them though. So there's four categories of the capstone project. One is the C T E or academic project, we have work-based learning experiences, or there's, um, community leadership or school leadership. And we wanted to share with you some, um, activities that are actually happening at the schools. So the first quote up at the top is actually a quote from a student at Baldwin. Um, this is Jalen Hitchens, and that's actually him telling us what the credential has done for him. He is the captain of the football team, the basketball team, he ran track, he participated in five thousand role models, and was a student intern, so he did a lot at his school. And, um, glowing remarks from his administrators, he completed everything to earn the Duvall Ready, um, diploma seal and is doing amazing things. And as you can see, it definitely has prepared him for life after graduation in many ways. So, um, those are exact words from him that we wanted to share with you. And then the first project on the left, that's from Frank H. Peterson Cosmetology. They were working on a Halloween makeup project. They had to do a lot of research and they had to relate it back to, um, a movie or a scene or, um, some sort of production. They had to do the research for it, they had to collaborate with others, and then they also had to use technology to digitize their portfolio. They made a resume and then they presented it. So all of those skills that they learned from Florida Ready to Work were then put into that capstone project.
And the next one under work-based learning, those are Darnell Cookman students participating in a real work-based learning scenario with, um, U F Health. Um, Florida, one of the experiences, they, they went off campus with their partners at U F Health to, to see what that work environment is like, participate with, um, employees in the field, uh, in which they're interested in focusing in that area of medical careers. And so they were onsite practicing some of the skills that the medical employees actually do every day, um, as part of their work-based learning there. And then the third one to the right, the community school leadership, that's a group of Stanton students who are currently in the S L S dual enrollment class, that was kind of their pilot group. But they, um, reach out to elementary schools and the group of seniors in the S L S class go to the elementary schools a couple of times throughout the year and work with them to solve a world problem. So a really high-level question that they work with a group of elementary students on creating ideas on how to solve worldly problems, whether it was hunger or, a lot of them focused on like, um, the environment and, and the ocean and climate warming and those types of things. But there were some different experiences there. But the culminating project was the elementary students coming over to Stanton to present their, their project to all of the students participating. So there were two elementary schools this year who participated in that, a fourth grade class from Hendrix and of the fifth graders from Seabreeze. So every year that teacher selects different elementary schools, uh, to participate. And it really was something that already happened that we've wrapped into this, to not make it something more, but to really recognize the great ideas that teachers have and, and the work that students are already doing to apply it to the Duvall Ready, uh, diploma process. Of course, they also have to do all the other components, um, associated, so they're able to tie it all together in those types of experiences. So definitely wanted to, to share some of the types of experiences that are happening with those capstone projects.
And this is the flyer that we created to share with businesses. So part of, um, the work that we're doing is making sure our employers know that our students are Duvall Ready. So this flyer was created that, um, shares what Duvall Ready is so that they know that our students are going through the soft skills curriculum, earning this credential that is recognized in the state of Florida, and what those different components are, what, what we're saying our kids are ready for. And then that Q R code takes them to our website, which has some more information, and then we're working on adding additional information as we're, you know, growing the pilot group, as we're tweaking things, as we're continuing through this year and then on into next. So that was created and shared specifically at our employment fair, which is on the next slide, um, which was held last week already.
Yeah.
Um, so we had four hundred and fifty students, about eighty to ninety employers. Um, and these are some pictures of students that were at the employment fair, and that was at the Prime Osborne last Wednesday. It was extremely successful, um, even had Westside High School did, brought about eighty-two students, they brought two buses of kids. And they did, um, a preparation event the day and weeks before. They did resume writing in English, they did a clothing drive, they gave students ties, helped them to dress, they showed up with a presence. Um, so that was really cool, kids got jobs, it was an amazing event. So we got to share with employers about Duvall Ready and, um, students had a wonderful time, employers gave great feedback. So it was a great event for our kids and also, you know, another kickoff to help, um, employers understand how we're preparing our kids to be ready for employment with them, so great experience.
And that was really the first opportunity for us to get in front of a group of employers and share about the Duvall Ready experience. This is really the first, um, time students were able to share Florida Ready to Work type experiences or capstone experiences with employers. So, um, we're working on gathering some feedback from the groups to, to get their feedback from the interactions with the students and then their, um, just continue to get feedback from them on the whole Duvall Ready diploma process as we think ahead and continue to, um, improve it if it needs to be. So, um, always open to that feedback. It's really about connecting employers and opportunities to students and making sure we are providing what the employers are looking for, but also preparing students for things beyond employment as well, so a combination of both. And this slide rubber shows where we are to date, um, I don't know, maybe a week old as far as data points are concerned. So we have that, the participating students in the career exploration in eighth grade that are in purple, that seventy-eight hundred represents really all of our eighth graders. Um, out of all of our eighth graders, fifty, we know fifty-four hundred of them have comp, received all of the June sixth Junior Achievement Inspire lessons from the counselors or social studies teachers and at least logged into the career exploration site. I'm still working with Junior Achievement to get final numbers of those who complete the complete career exploration site. There's some integration things that we're having to tweak to make sure we're getting accurate numbers. But we're able to confirm that just over fifty-four hundred at this point have logged in and at least gone into the career exploration site. Um, I know several of the middle schools have plans to provide the instruction and do the career exploration piece, like during the various testing windows coming up, when students have to sit in different locations, maybe well parts of the school test. So, um, we do anticipate those numbers to increase before the end of the year. And then you see all the way across that top row, we've had over a thousand seniors complete at least one component of the Florida Ready, of the Duvall Ready diploma requirements. So they've done at least one of the Florida Ready to Work components, some, some of them have done more. And to date, we've had eighty of those s- seniors, of all seniors, already complete all components of Florida Ready to Work and the Capstone Experience. So we expect that to increase over the next month as seniors finalize things. We know some things are in place, but that's where we are as of now. And then you see we have hundreds, thousands of students in the other grade levels starting to learn these skills and participate across the board in some of the Florida Ready to Work components. So, um, I think it's a decent start. We have students learning the, the, the soft skills that have been identified. And, um, we'll continue to refine our processes and work with those lower grade levels that, um, to make sure they all have opportunities to participate by the time they graduate. And just some next steps, of course, our seniors, they're gonna continue to work. They really have for about May nineteenth, that's when senior grades finalize and then promotion retention process starts. So, um, they have just over a month to finalize those capstone experiences with the Duvall Ready designees and, and that data entry piece. So we'll be supporting those school-based staff members with that data entry if needed. And then, of course, we've, we've ordered the medallions, so I forgot to mention that, the Duvall Ready there in the corner. That was, has been turned into a medallion. Um, I don't have them yet, but they've been ordered and they'll be here in time for commencement with a white ribbon. So, um, they'll be receiving those, every one of the graduates who are Duvall Ready will receive that medallion, um, regardless of the school, so that'll be consistent across all schools. So that'll be consistent across all schools. And then just looking ahead to next year, we want to continue to engage with our employers. Make sure now that we're graduating students with this Duval Ready Diploma option, make sure our employers are aware. Continue and increase our communication plan for parents, right? We're now at a point where the process is set and parents can see the status of their students in focus. So we really want to have a communication plan moving into next year to better inform parents of these opportunities and just refine our processes from lessons learned this year and continue to make it as least burdensome on teachers and school-based staff as possible, but providing the opportunities to all students moving forward. And I've mentioned Florida Ready to Work a few times. I know that is a significant piece. You all know that's a significant piece of earning the Florida Ready or the Duval Ready Diploma. They continue to be a great partner. Last year they gave an incentive just to kind of get it up and running for students in the spring. They gave $10 per credential earned. That's the Proctor one-hour assessment, the culminating test. So if they earn that state credential, for every student who earns a state credential, the school gets $10 to the discretionary fund. That continued throughout this year. But then just recently, they gave, are giving schools an additional $250 for every 50 credentials earned after April 1st. So that it's just another incentive to finish out the year and provide students opportunities if they've not yet done so to earn that Florida Soft Skill credential. So that's definitely an incentive if I'm a school principal and need some discretionary dollars to spend on students or whatever for future. And that's our thing.
Opening up for questions, Board Member Joyce, did you get yours answered?
I did. I wanted to know how are you going to recognize these graduates? And so you took care of that question. But follow-up question to the chair, Dr. Green, since this is our first year, a commencement, recognizing these students, is there going to be anything from the podium that's going to, you know, let parents know there's a new program and, you know, and these students have this particular medallion? Are we doing anything like that or?
To the chair to Board Member Joyce, we will.
It can be written in the script.
It can be written in the script.
Well, I mean, I think a lot of these parents have, you know, kids that are.
They will need to work with the schools because it is their script.
Yeah, sure. But certainly they usually say.
Because normally it's in the program what the corps represent. And this one, this would be a new one, that would be also in the program, but yes.
Vice Chair Pearson.
Yeah. Would it be possible for a student to earn all the way up to the Proctor test over the summer? Like, is this something a student could work on at home over the summer or does it have to be done at school?
They, through the Chair Board Member Pearson, they can do the blended learning modules, the four components over the summer. They would not be able to take the Proctor test, has to be Proctored. So that would have to be organized to have a Proctor, but absolutely they can work on the floor.
For the Proctor one, do you have to be enrolled in a class to do that or how, like, how would a student do that?
No, you do not need to be enrolled in a class. It's the, the schools create testing schedules and then they may just be pulled out of a class to go sit for that test or something, but no, you don't need to be enrolled in a specific class.
And then who decides, thank you, who decides what qualifies as a Capstone? Like, is there a white person in the school that you give a proposal to or how does that work?
Yeah, so each school has a, we've been calling them a Duval Ready Designee, right? So we'll meet with them at least quarterly just to get feedback and progress monitor and then address questions like that. Then there's one, really in most schools, there's two people that actually input the data into the, into the system. But as far as the approved experience, there's really a list of approved experiences that we created in the beginning. And then there's a form that actually goes to the CTE office from the dual base, the school-based designee to approve it. So yeah, if, if somebody, if there's a teacher or a student has an idea or whatever, they would go to the school-based designee and say, hey, I have this idea, is this on the list? They say, oh, no, it's not on the list. So then the school-based designee would get it approved through the CTE office.
Okay.
I'm so excited about this program. And when I was at the Council Great City Schools, I ran into the superintendent from Louisville that had the What's in Your Backpack? And I said, oh, it's taken us a long time. But, and we didn't copy, but we got, we loved the idea. And it's been really, really neat because I know Board Member Joyce was there and, and Board Member Jones was there at that Council Great City Schools conference in Louisville. And I remember talking to Dr. Green and said, you're going to love it, this idea. But what I really, yeah, what I really like.
It's like the K-9 unit. It's like the K-9 unit.
What I really like is how we can attend these conferences and we get these ideas and they don't come back and we had, it takes time, but the board continues and we get this woven to our strategic plan and, you know, everybody has ownership of it. But I just want to applaud you for the work because I just thought it was a great idea. I didn't know how to do it. But you all have taken it to the next level and just, I mean, I think it exceeds the Louisville What's in Your Backpack? So I just applaud your work and your effort and hope you stay at Duval County because I, for a long time, because I think this could launch you guys anywhere you wanted to go. So thank you for your leadership on this. It's very impressive. And you all did the work and I appreciate you getting us to this point.
Board Member Joyce.
I can remember when we were discussing this during our strategic planning session and I can remember your facial expression.
It was not joy.
I mean, there is like one eyebrow raised and I'm like, I'm trying to figure out how we're going to do this, but this is absolutely beautiful. I'm sure we can expand on it and do, but this is, I think for me, this has exceeded my expectations and I remember your facial expression.
I will share.
I will say, I concur, I concur because I remember the same thing, watching Cory, he doesn't play poker well. Cory did not play poker well. I, I will say, I want to concur with you. I think this takes it to the next level and I'm just excited about it. So kudos to you guys for the work you've done. It's impressive.
That's a cool question. Through the chair. Love it. Like it's, I can't wait to the graduation and see how many students. I know Board Member Pearson asked this question, but it's, May 19th is coming up for the deadline. So if a student hasn't done, they've only done one module, could they potentially finish and actually get the Duval Ready right now? Like, so if the announcement went out, like I put someone on Facebook, hey, there's sometimes, that is still a possibility.
I would say yes, if they're not like struggling in their other courses, right? We want them to focus on graduation requirements. Because they have to graduate first.
No, one is more important.
Right, right. So, but yes, for a motivated student who's not trying to play catch-up in other areas, it is definitely feasible.
Okay. And then the last question is around, so what is, what is the goal for this graduation period? What do you think, where do you think we're going to hit or where are we trying to get to for like the folks who are going to be wearing those medallions at graduation?
Are you asking how many are going to get there across the district? We, baseline year.
But, no, that's, that's real.
Now, playing poker.
Eyebrow music.
One or more is a success for the first year. I mean, they've had monks.
We were in zero, so anything is, anything is.
And they already, they already in 80 now.
So I, if I may add, interject, we do also want to make this something to strive for. I mean, if we graduated with a thousand, you know, so many, everybody with it, then how, you know, how robust was it really? So part of this is some responsibility on the student and their, their family, what's going to work over the summer, it, go for it.
I voted on it, so my kid's going to do it.
And also making sure like the job fair that we have, we want the students who are going to go to that job fair to be Duval Ready so that these employers actually see, yeah, Duval County, they are making sure that, you know, every student doesn't decide that I want to go to college right at the end of, of high school. They might want to go into the workforce for a little while. And I will share that we did make sure that these were not, there's nothing wrong with working at McDonald's, but these were employers that careers could be developed, which you can also, I just don't, I'm not trying to say anything bad about McDonald's because you need to do a career McDonald's to become a manager. But we're in a large urban city that has CSX and there was a picture of CSX up there. You know, and they're saying, we're looking for high school students who want, what, to drive the train, what do you call that person? And conductors. I mean, they came out, they only have to have a high school diploma and they start out at $75,000 a year. Now, you do work a horrible schedule, so you're probably working on the weekends and that kind of thing. But that was the goal to expose students to, you know, you might not be the first one jumping in line to go straight to the university, but, you know, you, you're going to graduate, we want to give you that stepping stone to a career that may send you back to, oh, I think I need to go to the UNF or, you know. So I also want to commend Mr. Wright and his team. Jill has just been phenomenal and your supervisor, I forgot his name, Patrick, have just been like dogmatic in making sure that this is going to happen and that we do it well and that it's something students are hoping to get. So we went from pen to medallion and everything in between.
Board Member Carney, I think you've had another question.
Yeah, just quick, I am just as excited about this as everybody else in this room. Thank you so much for your efforts on this. It's, I'm like, I'm doing a lot about this. My question to you is, is there something, is there a, almost like a packet that we can send out to businesses that might not know? So like, I'm just thinking about relationships that we all have with people that own local businesses. Yeah, is there a presentation that we can shoot an email to local business owners to get them more aware so that we can keep adding more and more companies to our employment expo to create more jobs for our graduates?
Yeah, so we, we initially started with this flyer. I think we may refine it a little bit, but there's a QR code on there that takes you to some more information as well. So we can get.
Can you drop, can you drop like, like one pager, 200 copies off and they can put, we can have them board run it?
Yeah.
And so, I will say, like, I'm speaking to a rotary next week, I'd take 30 copies in the end of that at the rotary.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about all, all the relationships that we have as a board and we could be very helpful.
Yeah, I think it would be great.
So, okay. All right.
Just one quick question. Like in addition to the medallion they get, do they get a piece of paper so they, when they go to employer, I don't think they want to care of that. Maybe they want to wear it around, but.
Look, but I love helping.
But when you go get your, you know, just have something that shows the employer that you completed this would be, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, thank you for asking. They will get a seal on their diploma.
Okay.
And then it'll also be an indication on their transcripts. So there'll be two different official records with that information on it.
Thank you.
One thing I think, sometimes students have a hard time figuring, like with resumes, figuring out what to put on there. So it could be good to have sort of some common language or at least beginning language around, hey, here's how you describe your Duval Ready sort of piece that could go with counselors or whatnot to help, since schools are, seem to be helping with resumes and whatnot, that'd be great. But this is, this is fantastic.
We'll also have the signed certificate from the governor of Florida Ready to Work too.
With the soft skills certificate. They received that state soft skills certificate also.
That's a good idea.
That's great. All right, well, thank you.
Glad you all went last.
It's all good. While, we're going to move into governance and I've got some general updates that I was going to do real quick and whatnot, and then we'll do around the table while Mr. Wright is here, while Mr. Wright is here, because in case anybody have any questions. I don't know if you noticed, but one of the things I requested wasn't a tat, was a one-pager, something that actually these two people were part of a board that requested this happen a couple of years ago when the grad rates were going to be increased and they went and lobbied about the impact. And I asked them to update the one-pager that was done at that time. Mr. Wright's shop did update it and it was attached. I went ahead and brought copies and I'll give each of you the copies. As you talk about relationships with people, want to make sure that everyone takes a look at this and shares this information. If you look at the data points using 2021 data, if the new, the new scores go into effect, what we, we had an 89.5% graduation rate in 2021. Using the new one, it would have been 72.5%. Go further, African-American grad rate that year was 88.2. If the new scores go into effect, it would have been 64%. That is a minus 24% for African-Americans here in Duval County. And that's using existing, an existing cohort that's been finalized. On this, one of the things that this, these former board members and maybe former board member Becky Couch leaned heavily on was the impact in terms of financial. And, and there's a paragraph on here about that, which looks at high school graduates earn an average of 875 a week, earning over $1 million in a 30-year period. Non-high school graduates, on the other hand, earn 675 a week, making $300,000 less than high school graduates in the workforce over 30 years. When looking at our large urban school district over a 30-year span, just one graduation cohort, it equates to $400 million in lost potential earnings. That's taxable dollars in our city and that's just one cohort, $400 million of potential loss. So if y'all will take a look at this, really read it and then if you're speaking to anybody, particularly those people that might be over in Tallahassee, if you could encourage them to take one more look at whether they're really going to put these scores into effect because we are going to plummet if it happens. And not because our children are any less smart than last year, just because scores have been changed. And again, you know, the governor has kind of pushed this off a couple of times and I just thought it was important to have the hard data on the items. So I did make copies, I'll hand those out to each of you. And thank you to Mr. Wright, do you want to add anything to that conversation or no? And if you want more information from him, he updated two, two cohorts that demonstrate in both cases, the district grad rate should drop 17, 16 to 17% and African-American grad rate, two cohorts, one dropped 23%, one dropped 24.2. So about 23, 24% for African-American. Yeah, I was going to give multiple copies. So that's there. And again, thank you, Mr. Wright for updating that. We are heading into the two-year celebration of the Sales Sir Tax Oversight Committee. I'm going to call Ms. Young up. She has asked for a couple of minutes of our time to tell you about some fun stuff headed our way. I should have warned you, you were second, I apologize.
So we are thrilled that we are, we're thrilled that the committee has done such an outstanding job of providing updates to the board and to the community over the prior two-year period. We're sad that we're coming up to the expiration of the first term and that means that some members may decide not to continue to participate or board members may decide to nominate a new member for a second term. We do need to collect information. I know that Mr. Rogers sent an email out, I believe on Friday of last week requesting similar information. What we provided for you, and I'll pass these out, are your individual nomination forms. That includes who your current member is as well as the attendance information for that member over the prior two-year period. I think that that, we thought that that would be helpful in you deciding whether or not to nominate that number to return or to consider a new member. The exciting news, and I'll be really brief, is that the last meeting, which is on May 17th, we are planning an opportunity to really celebrate the work of the Oversight Committee and we also would like to invite the new members so that it's a transition meeting. So it will be the last official meeting of the existing committee and the new nominees will have an opportunity to observe the work and to be a part of the celebration and hopefully be encouraged to fully engage and participate over the next two-year period. So more details to come. It will be, we hope that all board members will be able to participate and attend that meeting and be a part of the celebration. With that, I will pass out the forms.
And what was the due date on the forms again?
As soon as possible, as soon as possible.
And if you'll hand them to just.
And if you'll hand them to just, uh, to one of our ad- admin staff in the office, they'll give them.
Yes, if you would just cast, uh, return them to the board office staff, sorry.
Um, alright, so, any questions for Ms. Young, um, Mrs. Thompson, excuse me, something hard, old habits die hard. Uh, superintendent evaluation, just wanna bring this up, we've kind of been in a holding pattern on that because we don't know what the state's doing with test scores. Um, but we're starting to try to figure something out in regards to that, so, um, and FYI, the, uh, evaluation committee, we won't, may wanna get together. Um, we are behind right now, but we are behind because we don't know what the state's doing at this point and so it's a little tough. But I think we've got, we're getting a little bit of information that might allow us to get moving and at least do the interim, the, um, interim evaluation piece, that mid-year piece. I think we can start moving on, so FYI on that, um, and we'll schedule a meeting for that now that we're here anymore. Um, audit advisory committee, um, meeting, um, the audit advisory committee has asked for a joint meeting with us and we've been kind of working towards that occurring, um, board member Joyce and, um, I believe board member Carney, you were in the last one too. Um, there was, they have had two subcommittees that have done some really, really good work, um, that they'd like to share out with us. We, they also want to, just like we wanna talk with them about how do we communicate with them as a board, they wanna talk with us about how do they communicate with us and how do we engage in making sure the work they're doing is actually the work we need them to do. Um, so, we've looked at May eighteenth, um, that is the third Thursday of the month, which is by board policy, the day that we usually pick up an extra meeting if we need to. Um, and so, um, before that calendar invite went out, I just wanted to let you know that the intent is for us to meet, uh, jointly as a board for that item, yes, eleven to two is when they typically meet. Okay. Um, so FYI on that. This is audit advisory, they typically do an eleven, uh, to one, eleven to one or two, we've started just saying eleven to two. But folks, I, they have really, these subcommittees have done some cool work, um, and, um, they really wanna meet with us and try to figure out, how do they, how do they do the work so that it's what we really need? Um, but we've gotta figure out how does that communication occur, so a joint meeting seems to be the right step, just like we just said, the J-Pep joint meeting. Um, any questions on that?
Is there any, is that some body that gives us information and then we vote on the recommendation, is that, how does that work within? I guess it doesn't matter since it's a public meeting, I just wonder.
That's why we're having a publicly, yeah, that's why we're having a publicly noticed joint meeting. And we don't, it's, it's just like when the Oversight Committee started, it was, okay, how do we do that? How do we do it, we have not had, um, a joint meeting with them yet, we don't know, it may be in the meeting that we have, we decide to do one once a year or one, twice a year, once in the fall, once in the winter, we just need to have some dialogue to get that process going. We now know for Oversight, they meet quarterly, we often join them, they come and do a quarterly report for board, board meetings. What does that look like for the audit committee? We just, um, we're far enough along and they're organized now and we're ready to roll a little bit further down the road, so. Um, and then finally, um, uh, Mr. Poole, I, I have asked Mr. Poole to speak to, there was some discussion, um, uh, and a thank you to, to board member Hershey on her leadership of calling for an investigation in regards to Douglas Anderson. Um, and I, just on a general note, I think, um, thank you to Dr. Green, she got in, out in front of that very quickly, but we also have Office of General Counsel who heard and so he let me know that maybe it would be good for him to have a couple of minutes just to walk through some thought processes that we might consider as it relates to that.
Okay, thank you, and through the, through the chair, um, and I, I repeat some of this in case somebody's watching and they, they're not familiar with this, but, uh, you'll recall at the end of the meeting on Tuesday night, board member Hershey had, had directed that, um, the superintendent, uh, come to the board today with a, a plan to have an investigation conducted into the allegations surrounding this matter with Douglas Anderson. Let me preface, I should have said this before I got started, just so you're aware, I've received, um, two notices from different law firms. So as we embark on this discussion, just to know, uh, that there are two, basically two, at least two claims that are out there that we can expect to see, so what I've say, I'm, I'm wording carefully with that in mind. So, um, after, and then, uh, board member Hershey and I had planned to talk Wednesday at two o'clock. And, uh, before we did that, Dr. Green contacted me and she had already, uh, communicated with a law firm, an attorney in Tampa. And so while we were, while she was briefing me on that, I looked them up. Although Erin Jackson is this, the attorney that she had been in communication with, I don't believe I've ever personally met Erin. I'm very familiar with the firm, her old firm, y'all may be aware, there was an old labor and employment law boutique firm in Jacksonville, Kaufman Coleman Andrews and Rogan, was here for years and years, well, sort of Tampa's version of Kaufman Coleman, uh, was, uh, her old firm. And, and a couple of them, some of the part, they, they split up, some of the partners went to Gray Robinson, uh, Erin and Kevin Johnson, her partner, and some other attorneys formed their own firm, I say all that to say, they're all board certified labor and employment attorneys. And that firm has provided over the years, I actually contacted one of her partners when I was in Nassau County about something, an HR matter. They do work for Hillsborough, Manatee, and so I think several other school districts with respect to HR matters, personnel discipline. So that's where, that's kind of the backdrop, um, on Thursday, and so she and I, Erin Johnson and I, or Jackson rather, and I spoke briefly, to, for me to kind of orient her a little bit further into, you know, what's going on. And, um, then on Thursday, I go every Thursday over to City Hall for OGC management meeting with Jason Teal and some of the other deputies, at which time we roundtable this, this issue. The, the desire with OGC was that the person who does the investigation be contracted by OGC. They go through OGC, it gives OGC, of course, a, a chance to vet, and I explained to them, I said, you know, I know a lot about this firm, I don't know her personally, but they, they're really top-notch, um, and also it gives them an opportunity to work hand in hand because, you know, we've got a couple of attorneys who are monitoring the situation because of these notices of claim. So they would be able to, well, myth this person in the investigation, so it just gives them more of a heads up, you know, what you're aware of. So that's, um, where we are, Sean Burnett and, um, Jason Teal, they've got the contact information for this attorney. Don't know if they have yet been in contact with her, although I've talked to her as recently as Friday. So that's the status right now.
Is there an opportunity, I mean, this is gonna, you know, is there an opportunity to have three to five attorneys that handle this kind of, these kind of claims, kind of, you know, what's gonna happen here for the Office of General Counsel to vet? So that we have, you know, we're looking at several people to say, who, who does the board, or I don't know if it's a board decision, I don't know. But it just seems to me like, you know, if you have, there's a lot of attorneys that do this, looking at maybe three to five and s- making a decision based off of that.
And through the chair, I'll certainly talk to Jason Teal about that, what, and one of the, one of the catches, you know, by the charter, is whenever there's outsourced legal services, then the general counsel for the city's got to approve that. So what I will do, I'll reach out to him today and mention to him, you know, this conversation and say there is an interest in looking at that. And, you know, considering.
Decision is Office of General Counsel or is it the district?
It would, well, I think, I think Jason Teal tries to be very deferential to the wishes of the board. I think by charter, ultimately, he's gotta give his stamp of approval. But having said that, I know he's gonna be looking to me and to, to know what the wishes of the board are. I, I'll tell you what, what I had mentioned to him was, I would think you want somebody who can check a couple of boxes. Education law experience, they understand how school districts work, it's similar to a conversation we had with respect to another firm, but somebody who also does HR and they do, out of that firm, they do HR for Hillsborough, I believe Hillsborough, if I'm not mistaken, which is a very large school districts, is that familiar with the, um, you know, some of the unique aspects of human resources, employee discipline issues as pertains to school districts. There, candidly, as far as I know, there are only a handful, most of the attorneys who check those boxes are in-house with school districts or they represent, uh, RAC Charter schools. There are outside counsel who do work for school districts, there are only three, there are probably more that I just don't know about. I can only think of three in the state that do it, they do it, my old firm, and then, you know, Sniff and Spellman. There's a fourth firm that, out, out Tallahassee that does some labor and employment, but mostly he does collective bargaining for school districts, was kind of a different animal, um, that we're looking at here. This individual I know has done, in conversation with her, I know that she has done an investigation like this. So, that's what.
Other questions?
I have a quick question.
No, go ahead.
Uh, through the chair, um, I know you as well, we received a number of documents that night as well. What, what is happening with those documents and any of the statements that were made in there, is that, does that get passed right to our professionals? I, I just don't know what happened with those documents.
Through the chair, I, I, aside, number one, I'll look at them, but number two, I thought equally as important, if not more so, I've provided OGC for the copy of those documents because we've got attorneys who are monitoring the situation because they're, frankly, they're the more senior litigators and also where, um, and so Kyle Gavin and Sean Burnett have those, they have a copy. And they're the two attorneys who are, and Kyle Gavin was actually here Tuesday night at the board. And for your reference, his wife is actually the board attorney in Flagler County, school board attorney up there. So they've got a copy, I've got a copy, I'm not certain, I've not provided a copy to investigator because it's still, the question is, who's that gonna be at this point? It's, uh.
Yeah, my question was more, cuz it's also a, a district, like staffing, cuz there were, there were pieces in there that weren't even about this, it was about other, there was a lot of different names that were listed, so I just wonder if there are other, other staff that also got them and sort of did some initial reading to.
Can I do a, um, I, I will say, they've been provided, um, to Ms. Schultz, um, board office might have provided them to Ms. Schultz cuz I thought there was potentially more professional standards, items in it.
Through the chair, they were also provided to Chief.
Sure.
Yes, absolutely.
So, th- through the chair, um, to Mr. Poole, once the, um, decision is made to engage with, um, an attorney, what kind of timeline, is this one of those, um, situations that you're getting feedback in thirty days? Or is this a situation where it's months or does that just depend? I mean, I like a timeline, like, you know, you're gonna do this and you're gonna have it done by, you know, this deadline, yeah. Or, or, and if it's gonna be extended, will we be able to have kind of updates or no progressions? Or specifically if something comes up that the board may need to take action on?
And, and through the chair, I'll have a much, once we know who that person or those persons will be, then we can have that conversation with them, right now, that's, I don't know, cuz I don't know who will be selected. Uh, once I know, then of course we can have that, um, Ms. Jackson understands that there's a desire and it's one of these balancing acts, you know, the desire for information and to get answers ASAP. You know, balanced though with the need to be very thorough and thorough. I haven't had that conversation with her about, you know, what's your timeframe, because I haven't been able to say, you're ready. Here's, and, and too that you all understand, you will be privy, um, to that. The, the reason, there were a couple of reasons why the idea of going through your council, first of all, they're gonna need somebody as basically a consultant they can talk to and say, what do you find in here? And, and it also, you know, there's a privilege, there's a work product privilege, if, if, if an attorney, you know, is doing work in preparation or consulting with somebody in preparation for threat litigation, there's a privilege and, you know, there's a time when something, ultimately even privileged materials may be a public record, but right now, you know, we don't want that to be the time. So, um, that would also, it would en- enable you to know, while at the same time, it would be privileged from public consumption, at least for now, until, uh, until all this is over.
Board member Joyce, you have a question?
Yeah, following up on that, um, I know, and, uh, well, my question's around the scope of what we're asking them to do. Um, board member Hershey's looking at a timeline, and I think it's very important that we understand what we are engaging, what, how we are engaging a firm to do what, and, you know, the scope of what we're asking them to do needs to be very clear, um, in my opinion. But I also feel like, you know, the reason why I brought that question up is because about vetting or looking at other attorneys, because I don't want there to be any, any, um, concern in the public that if we're asking a firm to investigate the district and the handling of an HR matter and we are engaging in a attorney that's recommended by the district, that there could be some concern with that. Um, and I don't want there to be any, any idea in the public that we are, you know, trying to cover anything up. Um, and that's why just doing a thorough vet, a thorough vetting, but, you know, as, looking at a couple of different, maybe firms or people to do this, but understanding what the scope of what we are asking them to do, I think this needs to be very clear.
And I, I will say, I wanna echo something there, I specifically talked to Mr. Poole in regards to my concerns about being transparent with the public and making sure that any law firm that we retain, had they had any interaction with any, any of our employees in any point or anything along those lines, that that be fully vetted by OGC, I have a lot of faith in Jason Teal and OGC to make the right decision, even if that is the case and they find that. Um, you know, I, I certainly, you know, I, I have a lot of, OGC's done good work for us the last couple of years, so I do. But I think, like you said, a couple of different options so that all of that can be vetted. And again, letting OGC make that decision so that we know that it's done very objectively, this is what they do for not just us, but other entities cuz of consolidated government and, and they make these decisions on behalf of other entities, um, and I have faith in their ability to do that. But I appreciate you raising that issue cuz I, I raised. But I appreciate you raising that issue because I, I raised that issue to OGC already myself, Vice Chair Pearson.
Thank you.
Through the chair to Mr. Poole. Or maybe the chair knows, I don't know. You can answer this. But we have, it seems like that there are potentially four kind of streams of investigations. There's professional standards with at least three, maybe more employees from DA. There's law enforcement for one, for sure. There's, there are two lawsuits, if I understood correctly. And then potentially the inter, the external investigation that we may be hiring. Can you help me understand how these all fit together and what our expectations should be of information from these different, um, streams?
Through, through the chair, here's, this is what I think. I think with respect to, say, office professional practices in Tallahassee or office of professional standards up here, the emphasis would be, is an individual employee doing something bad? You know, it's, it's less, it's not really, it's like, what did you do or failed to do that you shouldn't have done or shouldn't have done? So it's a more focused inquiry on the individual. Criminal, um, I would think is a similar inquiry, just from the criminal perspective, you know, standpoint, did they commit a crime? Whereas what I would think, this inquiry is going to be more generalized. It, it would be what's going on at DA, if anything, what's the environment like, if anything? If there's any problem there, potentially that would be an issue. And again, you're, of course, I'm mindful of the fact that I don't decide that, that's for this board to decide, not try to stay in my lane. But I would think that an inquiry, unlike the other ones, would be, well, like, is there an employment law? You may say, was there a hostile work environment? In this case, was there, was there some sort of environment of disregard, of warning signs or complaints or whatever? That, that may be an area of inquiry that you wouldn't see in the other context. Or what about the reporting up the chain? How does that work? What happens up the chain? Which in the individual case, gee, did this teacher do a bad thing? You're really not going to focus on that with professional standards, professional practices. So it's more of a systemic, I think, inquiry is what I would think is involved here. Again, that's, that's according to me, that's what I think, is it would be more of a, it would need to be more of a systemic look. What did we know? What should we have known? What did we do about it, et cetera? That, that, yes, ma'am.
Well, I just back to scope of work and what I'm hearing is kind of an thought of where the scope of work based on your questions and whatnot. I, I would also though add, not just DA, do we have a system-wide of step one, step one, step one? I mean, I, I think we've got to look at, is there any, is, is, and I don't know how one looks at that, but anyway, I think we've got to look at, is it, is it not just DA?
Board member Carney.
Just to chime in on that, that's my, from my perspective, us engaging outside counsel as a board, that this is an umbrella-type situation that we need to not only tackle what the culture, what is currently or was at DA, but we also need to tackle it district-wide. And like Board member Joyce said, this is, this is huge, this is a big deal. And it's something that I think that collectively we as a board need to agree that we can not leave any stone unturned. If we're going to engage in outside counsel, we have to make sure that systemically we are covering all of our bases as to what procedures are in place, how situations are being handled, how decisions are being made in regards to disciplinary actions, um, and make sure that we don't find ourselves in this situation again.
And through the chair, if I may, and I think we're the, the interface, I'm basically the interface with whoever that could be. So that, you know, what are you doing, what's going on, and I can report back. And, well, you need to take a look at, you know, there's a desire that you, make sure that you look into this or look into that. So that throughout the course of that effort, there'd be communication, not to, you know, not that I, not in fear with what they're doing, but to just say, you know, to make sure it's reaching where we want it to reach.
So what would be your recommendation on, given the questions that were asked there, additional comment, the call for this, the scope of work question, the fact that we have sunshine, but we have a sense of urgency in this moment as well? Um, we want the public to know that we're moving. What should be our, do you have some guidance on, now I hate to put you on the spot right now, but, um, guidance on next steps? Um, so that.
My next step, my next step would be, I think, ours, because I, I would, my next step would be to reach out to Jason Teal. Talk to him about your concerns, Board member Joyce, and, you know, like, what do you think about, rather than focusing on this one, what do you, you know, what about looking at these other firms as well? And, um, I think that would be the next step and then assume. I, I think that would be the immediate step for me to take today so that we can get something nailed down in the next couple of days, who it's going to be. And then that way I can get with them right away, what's our timeframe? What are we looking at? And then report back to you. Here's, here's how it's. What I try to be careful about is I want people to be able to exercise, when they're doing an investigation, independent judgment. So like, it's sort of this, where does it take you? Go where, go where it takes you. I'm hesitant to, to do A, B, C, D, and E. What I probably recommend they do is hold this meeting up today and listen to what's being said right now. Um, which is exactly what I said to Erin about Tuesday night. I said, look at the, for the record comments, that will give you a very good idea, at least for the moment, where we are.
I, I'm wondering if somebody's listening, um, you know, is it, is it more, uh, should we go do an investigation through an attorney? Should we hire an investigator? I mean, should we do an audit? I mean, I think there's a lot of different ways to approach. I think we have to, as a board now, now, what are we looking for? What do we want, what do we want the result to be? What are we looking at at the end of the day? And what entity is the best to provide the information to us? Not that there wouldn't be a firm doing part of the investigation, but it just seems like this kid, this is a very large district. I mean, if you're getting all the way down to, you know, looking at the whole district, that may be something that comes later and under our different, um, organization, you know, somebody else to do that, not necessarily a firm. Is this, the way we're, the way I'm listening and what we're talking about right now, that, this could be like a year or a year and a half later before we would get the answers to what we're looking for.
Board member Hershey.
So, um, part of the reason I asked for this and I said that it should be broad enough, not sole focus on one employee, I will just tell you, my immediate interest is in knowing from a legal standpoint, are there any missteps by the district? And, and so that was the, the reason for that. I do agree, depending upon what is found, um, you know, and what, what are our systems in place? Are they working? Are we, are we following states, all of that kind of stuff? And to your point, Board member Joyce, that might be an aspect. I mean, this might be a multi-pronged, to your point, but, um, that was my immediate, um, desire to get that information on is, um, you've got criminal investigation going on and that's going to take a while. But as a district, at any level, um, exploring and understanding, do we have the right systems and policies and procedures in place? What do we need to address and is there any further action the board needs to take while everything else is going on? Does that make sense? So I think that it could be, but this was my first step.
Immediately, right now, we are focused on this investigation around DA. Where that leads is going, there's going to be, uh, you know, it's, it can be broader in the long run. The, the, the look at the whole district. But right now, I think we've got to focus on what happened at DA.
And the school and within our systems in place that allowed that.
That allowed.
I think, uh, through the chair, that Mr. Poole and OGC have built scopes of services that you talked about. So we'll know that we're getting to all those issues and concerns that we've heard. And make sure that we have systems in place that's protecting our students and our employees.
I'm going to do, so we're at one twenty-five, this is the first time since being chair we've gone over one o'clock. Um, and so I want to be mindful of time. Let me see if I can do this and see if everybody's in con竿ment. So at this point, you've heard the conversation, I think, having them go back and listen to this conversation, whether it be Mr. Teal or whoever, outside counsel and whatnot. Is there any way that next Tuesday, we could get an update as to where we are? Knowing that if we walk out of here today and there's something that we go, wait a second, that we can call Mr. Poole and it can be added? Because any one of us can independently sit down with Mr. Poole, um, and, and that can be done. But then, um, come back next Tuesday with a recap of, of any of that as well as where we are on the item so that we can keep this moving. I want to just, I'm trying to figure out how to respect everybody's thoughts and processes, but keep it moving. And again, I apologize for going over on time. Are there any other, are you good? Everybody good with that? Is that okay? Okay. Anything else for governance at this point?
I have one.
Sure.
One thing. Um, two weeks ago, I went and spent the entire day with JSO's ICAC unit, the Internet Crimes Against Children unit, uh, and sat with their detective to talk about online safety with our kids. And I would like to address the board and see if we would welcome them to come and do a presentation at a future board workshop and let the detective show us what he does as far as educating our parents, um, middle school and high school students. He comes in and does about an hour presentation, um, for each, for parents, middle school and high school students about the dangers of social media and online activity and online predators. And I thought that since we do have a human trafficking component in our health education curriculum, a lot of, um, they work with the National Institute for Missing and Exploiting Children. There's a lot of education that can be given to parents and our students about the dangers and how to be careful for parents on what to look out for. For me personally, as a parent of two teenage children, my mind was blown on how easy it is for our children to engage with a predator within a minute online. And, um, I've reached out to Ms. Copeland at Parent Academy, I haven't heard back from her yet, but I don't, I would like to see us engage in a potential program with JSO's ICAC unit. They are working so hard to keep our kids safe online. And since we are providing laptops to all of our students, I think that, um, it's imperative that we implement some type of education to our students and parents. And also, Mr. Colbert and I have also talked about too, he's got, he has some, some technology in the pipeline too that could piggyback on this as well. And so, um, I wanted to speak to you all about that and let you know about my experience with that unit.
Yeah, they're awesome. I've seen their presentation in schools before and they do amazing work. I'm wondering about maybe if we could, next time we do a technology update for the board, if maybe we had them come and do a fifteen-minute, kind of like the partner presentation kind of deal? Maybe we could put it there and it would be dovetailed nicely with that. Does that work, right?
That'd be great.
I would look. All right, anything for you on governance?
I, I have something. My question is, we are moving towards turf fields. And I was in a conversation recently and reminded that even turf fields need future repair. And so my question, um, to Dr. Green and then to the board, because when it comes time to replace, many of us may not even be on the board because I think it's ten or fifteen years. Are we setting money aside, um, for that and how are we going to handle it? Because if we're making this investment to turn all these fields and go turf them, what happens when the, you know, comes due, payment's due and we haven't set aside money and then we go back to the grass fields? I'm just, if we're going to make this investment, what are we doing to ensure systems are in place, that dollars are there so that in fifteen years from now, money's there and nobody's blindsided by, by costs?
Through the chair, Board member Hershey, it is between ten and fifteen years where you have to do maintenance on a turf field. It does, we continue to set money aside for every single one of our fields, whether it's grass or turf. And grass is like, we're between forty to a hundred thousand dollars, depending on how bad that field is. So those dollars, I shouldn't say those dollars, that practice won't go away.
Okay.
That they need to keep setting aside these, these dollars to, because based on inflation, we still might not even get to all the fields being turfed if, if inflation continues to rise the cost of everything that we're doing. But if you get there, then you still, it didn't like make the grass budget go away.
Okay, I, I just wanted to be sure. I thought, I, I didn't even think about that until somebody mentioned that they were blindsided and I thought it'd be a good conversation for us to address sooner rather than later.
Real fast, um, piggybacking on that, um, since we know that there's a possibility that we aren't going to have enough funding for all the turf fields, I, I mean, I know, I didn't say that right. I didn't word it correctly.
I don't know.
But my point is, um, I know there are some, uh, you know, some of the high schools that they don't really want to move to turf. They wanted to maintain their grass, uh, facilities. Or would they, would, would they be able, would they be able?
They haven't reached out. Who are they that don't want?
They're not in my district.
Oh, oh, okay. They need to, they need to reach out.
Because there is a, there is a, there's a, you know, competition about, you know, can you perform better on turf than you can on grass? And we see that in the NFL as well, you know, when they, when athletes are out there performing. I just, has the district given the option for?
I haven't heard any school that says, I don't want turf. I really want them to speak to Ms. Tally because I, I said, hey, first, the first goal should just make sure that there's one in each board member's district, based on understanding this cost. And then some board members only have one school, one high school.
I don't take care of me on the first run.
You only have one.
That was what I was saying.
So, but, yeah, last weekend.
Baldwin may not necessarily want, you know, because they have other facilities and, you know.
Well, Baldwin is not in the, they're in for new rebuild, so they're not even being mentioned. So, because.
Artificial.
For art, for anything right now, because whatever's going to happen, it has to happen when they do their rebuild.
I didn't mean to prolong the conversation, but since we're talking about it. No, you're good, we're already, we're over.
Speaking as the mom of a soccer player, I don't want all of our fields to go hurt. But, I mean, she's going to be on three years, so.
So I don't, I don't, like I said, funding and the cost of everything continuing to rise, don't know that, that it's going to be possible. But it was committed that there would be one in each board member's district. I mean, there are some high schools that if we don't do something with their field, um, like, well, Jean-Rébault is one. I was just on it last, I, I'm surprised we don't have broken legs all over the place. The thing crowns up in the center and it's altered. So there are some that grass is just not working out for them and we have to do something different. And then there's beautiful ones like Mandarin. I know the little crickets touched it one time.
Yeah, but then there's, there's Atlantic Coast and all. All right, I'm gonna bring everybody back in. I'm gonna bring everybody back in.
I'll stop talking about.
All right, I'm gonna bring everybody back in. You know, there's that fine balance of allowing the conversation and then keeping it moving, so we're gonna keep moving. Um, at this point, um, I want to thank, uh, uh, those members from district leadership that were here today. The soft skills update was fantastic. Oh, I saw you.
Yep, through the chair, everyone got a text from me that we had a major fire. That fire, we know for sure that two buses were completely destroyed and the other two, I don't know to what level, destroyed. But transportation will be covered this afternoon and it should not, but you'll see it on the news.
What is the road, is that a bus?
It's where the bus depot, SDA's bus, main bus depot is located. You, you'll see their name on the building.
Thank you again to those on the soft skills update, school safety. I want to thank Burton, um, thank you for all you did on that one. Um, and transportation, it sounds like we've got a lot of discussion, um, coming forward on that. Uh, with that being said, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second, second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Pearson, a second by Board Member Joyce. All those in favor, say the bye, yay?
Yay.
Any votes?
Why you nervous? The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everybody, that was a lot of work today. Shirt, the audit advisory. Nothing about your shirt. It's like, oh, my, we're, yes, almost okay. Okay. Um, so, we're still getting, um, Madeline is moving, uh, Madeline is finishing her cutting order.